Going to start this meeting, thank you. September 11th. I'd like to read something. Oh, I'm going to do a pledge of allegiance first. Finley, would you start?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, I'll read a couple of things. On behalf of the Merrimack Town Council, we offer our heartfelt sympathies to the family, friends, and colleagues of Sergeant Edward Payne of the Merrimack Police Department, who passed away on Monday, September 1st. Sergeant Ed Payne was a 19-year veteran of the department, retiring in 2012 after he was diagnosed with ALS. Ed was known for his strength of character and spirit in battling this disease, and the courage he demonstrated was an inspiration to all. Ed will forever be remembered, and he will always be missed. Thirteen years ago today, the tragedy of September 11th spurred a sequence of events that have challenged the United States and resulted in thousands of lost lives. On that day, almost 3,000 victims and first responders died, including those in the Twin Towers, the Pentagon, and the Pennsylvania Field. In addition, thousands of servicemen and women in the subsequent wars, four Americans in Benghazi, and most recently, the two American journalists, were a direct result of the terrorism started on that day. We all remember where we were 13 years ago, and how we felt during and after all of these tragic events. May the memories of all of these lives motivate us to regain our sense of unity for the common good and protection of our country. Never forget. Let us share a moment of silence to honor Sergeant Ed Payne and the innocent souls that were taken as a result of September 11th, and to remember the loved ones they left behind. Okay, announcements. And this has to do with council meetings. Thursday, September 25th, at 7:00 PM, in this room is a regular council meeting. Monday, September 29th, at 7:00 PM, in the Matthew Thornton Room, this room, there's a joint meeting between the school board and the Merrimack Town Council. Thursday, October 9th, at 7:00 PM, in this room is a regular council meeting. And on Thursday, October 23rd, in this room, at 7:00 PM, again, another regular council meeting. And Paul?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The police department will once again be participating in the National Prescription Drug Takeback Day on Saturday, September 27th, between the hours of 10:00 and 2:00 PM. Please visit the police department and spend some of your unwanted prescription medications in the lobby. Also, the Parks and Rec Department will be holding a community blood drive on Thursday, October 2nd, from 2:00 to 7:00 PM, in the function hall at Wasserman Park. If you'd like to schedule an appointment to donate blood, please call the department at 882-1046. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, first, let's see. Comments from the press are public. Don't run up now. Okay. Recognition? Oh, I'm sorry. Go right ahead. Please just tell us your name and your address?
Sure. And actually, this is about something you're going to be talking about tonight. My name is Wendy Thomas, and I'm a resident at Ten Wildcat Falls. I'm going to read this to you, so that -- and I'll hand it in if you want it afterwards. "I teach the chicken workshops for Merrimack's adult education. I own a flock of chickens, and I write about chickens for various magazines, including Grit, Mother Earth News, and Backyard Poultry. I absolutely agree with the intent of the proposed ordinance concerning roosters. However, the way it is written causes me not to support it. One thing that I stress in my chicken classes is that if you live in a residential area, you have no business having a rooster. I advise my class participants to only consider roosters if they have five or more acres of land. Chickens are a thrifty way to get clean food. It's a way to reestablish our connection to food. These days, many people raise chickens as pets, and because chickens -- chicks do not have external genitalia, unless they are sex-linked, you might not know you have a rooster until literally the cock crows. There are ways to keep roosters quiet. In an article I wrote for Backyard Poultry, right here, I outlined various techniques that some people are willing to use, including taking the bird into a garage at night, surgically removing vocal cords, which is a very drastic operation with an 80% mortality rate, but some people are willing to do that, and wearing something called a no-crow collar. If you are able to keep your rooster quiet, then he should be allowed in your flock. There are other various special conditions regarding fowl. It is not unheard of, and I have a case right now in my own flock, where an alpha hen can become a rooster. They begin throwing off testosterone and exhibit male behavior and plumage. Sometimes, these hens even start crowing. Technically, this is not a rooster. The ordinance would not cover this potentially noisy situation. Guinea fowl are great for eating ticks, but they're very loud birds, male and female. The way this ordinance is written, the females would be allowed, but the males wouldn't, which is not too helpful for close neighbors. I had one neighbor who went out of her way to tell me that she loved our rooster crowing. It reminded her of her youth. Should you have to get rid of your rooster if your neighbors don't mind? Likewise, if you own a significant amount of land, is it really fair to say that you can't have roosters? In our town, you are allowed to raise chickens and livestock. However, your neighbors have an absolute right to peace and quiet in their homes. Just like parents can be more tolerant of their children's behavior, chicken owners tend to be more tolerant of their flock's behavior, including crowing. But make no mistake, roosters in a residential area are a problem. So how do we find a happy medium? One way is through education. People need to know that you do not need a rooster to get eggs. You only need a rooster to get chicks. People who want to get chickens should have a local repository of information they can use and/or contact for information on chickens. Including fowl in a noise ordinance is fair, but if you have a noisy bird, I would hope that any kind of penalty would come with a warning for the owner to find a home or to ethically dispose of the bird. Without such a grace period, I feel that -- I fear that owners may panic, and many roosters will be abandoned in the woods, drowned in the river, or inhumanely killed in order to comply. We want to eliminate and reduce the noise, but we certainly don't want any animals to have to suffer as a result. I would suggest that a list of resources to help the owner remove the birds be provided. These resources can include links to Craigslist, a chicken network, a humane society, or culling services. Anyone who has taken my class has access to my culling services. It's not something that I like to do, but I'd rather put a bird down humanely, whether it is sick, injured, or a rooster, than to let it suffer. Culling -- everybody knows what that is. Okay. And I use a killing comb, so. In summary, I believe that the wording of the proposed ordinance should be changed to the following. The term noisy, foul, or simply birds be used instead of roosters/male birds. Make no mention of a town-wide ban. A grace period should be instituted to allow proper removal of any noisy bird, and a process be put in place to give chicken owners information on ways to remove birds. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that valuable information, actually. Okay, anyone else? Recognitions, resignations, and retirements? There are none? Appointments? And the first annual review with the Technology Committee, presented by Chairman Brian McCarthy? This is per Town of Merrimack Charter Section 6-6. There should be an annual review with the Technology Committee. And we're all ears, Mr. McCarthy.
Good evening. I don't know if it's been an exact year or whatever. The Technology Committee has met six times since the last time we've been here. We have one new member in that time. We've had a member who hasn't upped and has left, so we're still at five, and one open slot. What we've been doing since then is an update. Back over a year ago, we approved a vendor that came in and was going to redo the town website. We kind of said, "Looks good." Because of the budget process, that's now actually starting up later this month. Right, there'll be a meeting on that. So we kind of said, "Looks good," and budget process and all that stuff, so that's moving forward. The other thing that was happening during that time is the economic development. Wanted a new website, and they started to come, put out an RFP. We looked at that. They got back things, and we started to review that, and then it goes, "Oh, wait a sec here. The budget passed. Let's see what the new vendor is going to be doing for us." So that basically was thrown aside, but we did look at that and review that. The bigger thing we did is the welfare department was looking to revamp their software and get it replaced. We had several meetings over this. We looked at the initial contract, and we were just kind of, yeah, we were all throwing up your hands, saying, "You can't -- the town can't sign this. It's nuts." Mostly from a software, but also from just liability issues. And we just couldn't, as taxpayers, we couldn't have, you know. We're not going to not argue about that point. Went back and forth. We had four different meetings about that. And we basically passed a motion saying we do recommend that the town not sign it, based on, unless there were a few things changed. Since that meeting, they have changed those things. I believe the town is going to go forward and sign that. But it seems like the vendor really didn't want to change them until Nashua came forward and had the same issues we had. Nashua's got a whole IT department. We've got a bunch of guys that, you know. So that kind of meant, you know, the committee felt good about, you know, what we did in that light. And that's the issues that we've been dealing with in those meetings. In the future, we kind of sit around and wait for someone to tell us they want us to look at things. That's what we're here for, so.
Yeah. I just, I shouldn't say I'm surprised, but it helped me understand what you do, to how valuable your talent helps the town in reviewing, you know, the capabilities, and it really, you hit it out of the pack with that one, and that pack, and Nashua was the same.
Yeah. Nashua came back with the same kind of, "Yeah, well, we're not going to, yeah."
Yeah. Excellent.
So, any questions?
No questions.
It's sort of interesting that they haven't learned, because 15 years ago, they put this thing together, and they were going to require the cities and towns to use, to settle on one set of software. It was going to cost $15,000, a minimum of $15,000 to do it, back in '91 or '92. And I told them then, "There's no way that's flying anywhere because of the cost." And they got all upset because the arrangement that they had made through our good friends at NHMA was rather interesting. It died a much deserved death.
Yeah, there was a lot of stuff in there about privacy and stuff like that that was not addressed in the contract, that we just said, you know. Town's not, you know, who's going to be held liable if you end up with this information that identifies people out there, and so.
Right.
We'll appreciate and thank all the members for their time. Anyone else? No?
I know, it's going to be quick.
Thank you very much, Brian.
Good work, Brian, thank you.
Okay, public hearing. Related to changes to Chapter A 198 of the Administrative Code. To consider changes to A 198. Okay, also included added duties to the finance director position pursuant to Charter Article V. So I'd like to open the hearing at 7:00 -- oop, I should use this one. I'm getting, I don't know what that signal means.
He's recusing himself.
He's recusing himself. Gee, when do I? Would the public like to say, he's the finance director, just for the public who's watching on TV? Is there anyone who would like to mention anything? Speak to this public hearing. Apparently not. So we will close it at 7:23. Okay, what is the, what would the council like to do?
Move to the third and final reading.
Okay, a motion by Tom Mahon, second by Lon Woods. Any discussion? On the consent agenda, Mr. Mahon?
I presume. Yeah, we can put, well, you put it on the consent agenda. If someone has an objection, they can ask to have it removed.
Okay. Second degree? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I'm back. Legislative updates from state reps. Don't see any. Town manager report. Paul?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The fire department has utilized the auto-post CPR device, approved by the town council five times since it's been placed in service. Out of those five times, we have transported three patients to area hospitals with spontaneous circulation. We are grateful to Catholic Medical Center for their generous donation, and the town council for approving that donation. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, now, consent agenda.
Move the consent agenda.
Second.
Boy, they want to get out of here early, don't they? Boy, and who did the second, I'm sorry? Was it Tom? Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I do want to thank Tim for the time that he put in to create this.
And responsiveness to our suggestions.
Responsive, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, highway garage discussion. Discussion of the status. And I'll tell you why I put this on. During the summer retreat, we had identified the highway garage as being one of the top priorities, one of our goals. So I would like to get a feeling on whether this body wants to consider putting the highway garage on the ballot this coming April? Yes or no? The answer is no, that drops it for now. If the answer is yes, then that's further discussion. So I'm opening it up to anyone who would like to open it up.
I guess the question that I would ask, in one context, are we talking about the Public Works Garage? Are we talking about a bonding issue?
Correct.
Or?
Sorry, go ahead.
Or? Are we, is there the possibility that there may be other opportunities in town that may cause the council to reevaluate whether the owning is advantageous as opposed to leasing or renting? So that's, that would be my, that would be my question that I would ask.
My personal response is if the second is being considered, I'm unaware of it.
Okay.
I'm not sure of anyone else.
Well, for a point of clarification, we went out last week, earlier in the week, and we did tour the Fairpoint facility. And part of the reason for touring the Fairpoint facility was to take a look at the construction and the layout, and to see if it would provide us with any ideas that we could use to perhaps reduce the cost or make the facility more efficient for our use. Okay? And so, you know, there was no thought to use that facility for anything else, because the retrofit on that would be pretty expensive. You know, the building is in a mild state of disrepair, because they knew they were getting out of there, and they weren't going to be using it anymore, and so, you know, it's, it's in, you know, it could be spiffed up, there's no doubt about it, but, you know, it's tough. And I think they want to sell the property. I don't think they want to lease it, if that's the one you're looking at. And the price on it is rather high.
That I know. And I was aware of that. But I also understood it as you explained, that it was a visit to get some ideas. What to do and what not to do. Okay, any other thoughts?
We thought it had potential for tennis courts, though.
I think it is an important project. Would be nice if we could get it on a ballot again this year. I think the discussion, two weeks ago, I believe it was, three weeks ago, at our last meeting nonetheless, was sobering, because when we had our retreat, we thought, "This is a great project. We see the necessity," and so on. But I think the commentary was correct, in that by just throwing it back out on the table again with nothing changed, you know, just the price tag of whatever it might be for this year, might be hazardous. You know, I do believe the people, when they, you know, when they see the project and understand it, really do embrace it. As I had suggested a few weeks ago, that's at the open house that Public Works ran, everybody agreed that it was a necessity. The only concern that I heard was the overlapping of bonds, which does happen occasionally in towns, but it, that was their concern, a couple of people. But, so I don't know, you know, what type of things might happen, what we might do to make it more streamlined, you know, what we might take out of the project to put forward again. Absolutely, the cover page should get rid of the building that showed, because that was a fantasy and wasn't anybody's reality, but it was perceived that way, and so. So that's where I am. I'd like to do it, but I think we do have to contemplate the words that were spoken a few weeks ago, and how we might present it, what we might bring forward again.
I take exception to that. Dan?
I have all kinds of things to say on that highway garage, so I'm not going to, I could talk 20 minutes or half an hour, I'm sure. So I won't. I won't. But, so I'll keep it streamlined. I'll keep it streamlined in bullet points. And for full disclosure, I was a member of the team that sat there for several months to put it together, so I can admit when I'm on a bad team, and I can admit when I'm on an all-star team, and all that. This team couldn't have done any better. So if I'm bragging, I'm sorry, but this team that we put together on this highway garage project, from the TV shows, from the literature to the bullet points, and to call that silly drawing a Taj Mahal, my God, it would probably look like that. It wasn't that far off. But anything new, someone looks at it, and automatically, it's too nice. It wasn't too nice. It was just a box. It was just a box. That's all it really was, on the outside. So putting it back on, is it a mistake or not? I don't know. I don't think anybody here knows. The voters that day, a couple spoke up about the bonds. We have a paid expert here that the bond and our financial advice is, the numbers don't, they're not, they're too close to argue about. Waiting a year or two, and waiting for interest rates to fluctuate, in the big picture of things, that shouldn't be considered a high priority part of the discussion, in my opinion. Another bullet point. If you don't put it on, then I'm going to make a motion come budget time, or maybe before the fall, that we buy some paint. Because we're not going to have a highway garage. We shouldn't have property values next door to people who live there, with the highway garage looking like a mess. For $500, I think we should be able to buy 20, 30 gallons of paint, and paint the whole thing gray, at least so it looks better. Another bullet point. If we're not going to have a highway garage, we have to examine the workings of what happens there. Maybe the, all the cruisers now get farmed out for oil changes and other things, to local private mechanics in town. We look at the fire department, same thing. They're going to have to be off-site maintenance, and we have to just rethink of a different type of facility. That's enough. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Any other thoughts? Yes, John?
Well, I tend to agree with Finley that, I think every, and not necessarily disagree with Dan. I'm coming after you. But anyway. I know that they did do a great job in presenting the needs and what was considered and things of that nature, but I think there are a couple of points that we didn't do as well as we might have. One of them was the visual presentation, which a lot of people are visual. They have to see what they're talking about, and if they don't think that's the right thing. I can guarantee you, I voted against the first library proposal that came forward years and years and years ago, because it had glass front and columns and all this silly stuff, which didn't belong in Merrimack, in my opinion. And I guess the rest of the voters agreed to that. The other thing that I don't think that we managed correctly was the cost and the financial impacts. The overlapping bonds is a small change issue that we need to make people understand. The increasing cost of bonding is a big cost factor, and the longer we wait, as the economy improves, that big cost factor could really wipe out any savings we'd get over finishing off another bond at a small amount. And I think that the town is at a very low bond rate at this point, as far as the amount of finance they're carrying, and we could easily handle that effort. And the other thing, I believe, is that bonding makes financial sense. We're talking about paying for something as we use it, instead of trying to collect that money in the bank and then pay for it after we've collected that money. The advantage of that, obviously, is it's cheaper. You're not paying the interest on the bond. The disadvantage is you're charging the people that aren't getting any benefit to pay for the darn thing. And so those people that move out of town in the next five years or whatnot have paid into that fund and gotten no value from it. We want to get this garage fixed and working so that everybody in town can get the benefit of the improved highway maintenance, the improved snow removal and whatnot, because we have the trucks and the people that are in the right kind of shape and condition to be out there on the roads, protecting us from the snow and the ice and things of that nature. So I think there are at least two, if not three, areas that we could improve upon to try and understand or market this thing. And as you know, a couple of us met with a program manager who had some other ideas. And part of the funding that was talked about three weeks ago that we didn't fund was to try and bring a program manager on board to try and help us to put these presentations together into a more finished and complete package. I think that we could still do some of that work. We could still convince the town and help them to understand the necessity, the cost factors, and exactly what's being brought forward, so that we could get it to go forward. And I think it's appropriate that we do that, because it's not getting any better. In fact, it's only getting worse on a day, on a year-to-year basis.
So what's your feeling in terms of this year versus next year?
I think we need to go forward with it. I think it's still an absolute requirement. And if we turn around and say, "Well, we really didn't need it," I think we're sending the wrong message, that we do need it, and it is important. And if we have to sharpen our pencils to make that clearer, then let's sharpen our pencils and make it clearer.
Yeah, before I was going to make a decision on whether to bring it forward or not, I wanted to see some analysis on some of the points that have already been made about the potential increase in the cost of bonding, but also the increase in construction costs. Because when I've been dealing with other construction projects, almost all of them with the school district, those costs were fairly significant over time. The longer you delayed it, you were adding, you know, more and more that you had to bond, which increased your bonding costs and your interest and your debt service costs. So, you know, I had hoped to be able to look at some kind of an analysis that showed, you know, how much we were talking about, and because it's easy to sit here and say, "Well, it's not, you know, you're going to pay for it one way or the other." Okay? My experience is, you put it together, and you lay out the spreadsheet or whatever you want to do, and you show how that works, and people can take a look at that. And based on that, they can, they can make up their mind where they want to go. You know, the other thing is, people are forgetting that the reason that it's not, didn't come to fruition is because it did not meet the threshold for a bond, which was two-thirds.
Two-thirds or 60%?
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds. Two-thirds.
Two-thirds.
The school district, 60%.
Two-thirds. So, yeah, when's the last time they went after $3 million? The, so, you know, the, you know, the majority of the voters were voted in favor of it. All right? It just didn't reach the two-thirds threshold. And we did have a 60% thing at one time, but when we were looking at, when we were looking at it, no bond issue on the town side for 20 years had passed with less than 70% approval.
And that's why I'm afraid of just to spend 30 grand or 20 grand on better drawings or better, we, that numbers were there. The people didn't say, they said, "No, they said, 'No, I don't.'" My fear is that we're going to do a better dog and pony show. show with the same results, or hopefully with another 60, 80 votes, it passes. But it's a crapshoot. I don't, I'm not sure that spending 20 grand in better drawings, in a little few more numbers here and there, gets the job, convinces the public any more than what we did the first go-around. But I'm, I'm, I'm for putting it on, but be prepared for, for two noes, then, then buy the paint and subcontract the, the mechanics, and start, start looking at the facility in a different way.
My, my thing that makes me hesitate, is that I really, in my experience, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, Tom, a third time is almost impossible. If you go for a third time on a fairly unchanged proposal for bond, after the second time, people could really get annoyed, and they say, we already told you twice, and you haven't done any, presented anything different. So the third time comes around, you're, is that a valid concern?
Yeah, it is. But, see, now we're, now we're faced with the curse of the ballot referendum, okay? We're cursed with, with the SB2 balloting. Because when you had, when you were on the floor of a town meeting, or a school district meeting, okay, you could explain, people could get up and explain why they weren't in favor of something. And you could get a sense of what, or they would be talking to each other, or they would come over to you and say something to you about it at that time, because you were there, okay? And, and you, and you could get some, and you got a good sense of what they were or were not doing. It also enabled people to look around and sense that there was some way to get to a consensus on a number. And how many times, you know, most of us with that experience, how many times would you see groups of people in different parts of the room, talking about this, and this, and this, and the next thing you know, somebody comes up and says, how about this? And, you know, and work it that way. So, I mean, you know, it, it, it's, you know, and, and, yeah, it's the, it's the curse of, of SB2 in, in that regard. And, and you're, and you're pretty accurate, you know, when you look at...
I just don't want to get to the third time.
When you look at that.
I have a suggestion as a precursor. Why don't you put out there that you're gonna form another subcommittee? If you can't get volunteers, and you can't get eight people to put their, put their time and energy in it again, then that will be very telling. Leave it at that. If you can get eight people to step up and say, yeah, let's go do it, then, I, I can't be, it shouldn't be anybody who was on it before, other than, you know, those two guys. But other than that, it should be a fresh team. You know, you can't, you can't expect a different result from the same people. So I would think that that would be a barometer.
Show the camera to the two guys in the background.
Right? It would be a barometer on... You're gonna have to do it anyway. You're gonna have to form another one yourself.
Regardless, regardless of it's this year or next year. You have any thoughts?
I agree with you. I'm, I'm very reticent about putting this back on the ballot after the voters, so soon. I think, and, and Finley's comments that he made about people raising about the bond issue, like Tom, I heard the same thing. And to me, it, it might not be the work that the, the committee did about coming up with something utilitarian. I think it's explaining to the people that we're not going to break the bank. We, you know, Eileen and Paul, in the, in the finance team, have done a good job to put us in the position so that we can bond for something like this. And I don't think, this is my opinion, I think there's a perception that people in general, I'm not saying all, but there, there are some people that don't, might equate a bond with the mortgage, and they're like, well, you know, we've got three bonds out there. It's like taking on a mortgage. You know, the mortgage, it's just, it's just incurring, you know, more, more debt. I mean, I could be wrong. I mean, that's just the, the, the perception that I got from, from some of the conversations that I had with voters that expressed concerns about that. They, you know, there's, there's a, you know, the education piece about what, about what bonding does, and the impact that it has to the community. I don't think that that was... Well, it wasn't. It wasn't communicated. And I almost, I almost, I almost think that it's, it's, it's not taking the, the, the cover page off of the document. I think it's going out and, and, you know, pulling out a pencil and explaining, explaining the numbers, showing the debits and the credits, and how it all works.
But that was the complaints I heard as well.
But if, if Finley and Tom talk about...
No, there isn't any. There isn't any. All right? Because, like I said, there, there is no way to gauge the reason they, they see. And the other thing, you're, you're all sitting here talking about this thing like it got sadly defeated.
It didn't. I'm not, I'm not disputing.
Which it did not.
Did not. I don't dispute that, Tom.
Okay. It did not. All right? However, all the other things come into play. And sometimes, I think that personally, all right, so this is no reflection on anyone else, there are times when the voters just aren't, enough voters aren't comfortable with a decision. And they will grasp at any reason as to why it didn't go forward, even if that's not it, even if they didn't have one. Okay? You know, so, you know, it, it's always, I, I, quite honestly, I think this discussion is premature. I think it should have been taken as part of the budget process, and, and further on, in another couple of months, and that we should have, you know, asked the, the staff to come up with a little bit more finer analysis on this whole thing, and get it presented to us while we go through the budget process, and then make up our mind about what, I know we can, whether we're gonna go through with it or not. But if we do it now, we're cutting ourselves off.
Well, Madam Chair, my question would be, is what would be the drop dead date for us to make a commitment and get it on the...
Well, that's why I wanted to initiate the conversation, because if, in fact, we go for it, then we should not wait until January to start preparing. Because you're absolutely right. We need to get a committee together, evaluate what was already done, what can we do better, perhaps? And waiting till January, that's not much time before April. So that's why I wanted to bring it up now. And if the answer is no, then that's the issue, that's a dead, dead horse. If it's yes, then there are things we have to do.
Just, if you don't get eight guys in the room, and women, then it's dead. If you can't get a robust committee of eight people committed to this work, it's a lot of work. Let me warn you ahead of time.
And that's one of the things. If we end up deciding to go for it, that's exactly right. We have to be able to get those eight, get them on board, get the facts updated for those people, so they can do a different kind of presentation. And I think there's legitimate arguments on both sides. But we need, I'd like...
I'd make a motion tonight to get a committee off the ground. Get, the quicker the better, right?
With the intention, my understanding is correct, to put it on the ballot in April. With, with the intention. Okay. So all those, yes?
Wait a minute. What do you want them to do?
Can I make it even more simplistic? Could I request a motion of whether we want to pursue, yes or no? Putting it on the ballot, whatever that might encompass?
And that in a later meeting, when we can have a suggestion of committee size, what their charge will be and all that, when we have time to put that together.
Because if the answer is yes, then we can line those specific needs up. Is that a reasonable request of a motion? Do you want to, would you like to, as a town council, pursue what is necessary to have it put onto the ballot in April?
Oh, she's doing a great job.
I'm sorry.
No, are you kidding me? It's the best. Go right on.
That's a better motion.
And what did I say?
That's right. Sure, sure.
Do we want to pursue putting this on the, on the ballot?
Okay. Would you like to make that motion?
I kind of, kind of do, kind of don't, only because, well, because, what if the end of the committee there, it's like putting the carpet for the horse, I think. I think the committee will make that recommendation.
But then we get into the time issue.
Maybe the committee will say, you know what, we, it's now 4 million, we're, we're gonna have to postpone this for a while.
And we might.
And so therefore, it's not gonna be on the ballot.
And it might not be, but it's, is that the desire right now?
I heard it a little different.
Do we even want to pursue it?
I'd rather have the committee get together and make a recommendation that would provide value for the council to make the decision.
And that's one of the reasons why I asked the question, because if they're gonna do that, they gotta come to us by about the first of December.
First of December.
I agree with that.
Exactly. Which isn't much time, together, together.
Which means vetting the old information, and going back down, and fine-tooth combing it again.
I would like to...
Was that a... I'm just gonna suggest, what, if Dan withdraws his motion, why don't we just put it on the agenda the next meeting, to, 29th or whatever, to 25th, to deal with the committee makeup? Because we don't, right now, we couldn't put that, right down to the charge, to have it worded properly and everything. I don't think we can do that tonight.
Okay, but...
I don't think anybody was asking anybody to do it, I just was wondering, you know, you're gonna give a deadline, we're gonna have some...
If you don't, if I could, if I could just say, if you don't start, if you don't get a committee off the ground tonight, your, your, the weeks would just disappear, and there's not a time to have a committee.
And I agree with that. I agree with that.
See, and that's the issue. If the answer is, if it is the feelings of the council that you don't want to be able to, want to do it, for whatever reason, in April, then the committee is not even in discussion. If you do want to consider doing it in April, that initiates the discussion about a committee, or whatever else. And that's why I was wondering if we could take that first vote. What is the feeling of the committee of even considering putting it on the ballot?
But I think putting together a committee, I would argue that putting together the committee expresses an intent that the town council is desirous of wanting to see a highway garage, whether it goes on the ballot.
So that's, okay. So that implies...
My colleague is... I don't see it that way.
I don't either, but...
I see that as putting together the information and bringing it to us, and for us to sit there and evaluate that information, and then make it, make the decision that we're, that we're, that we're asked to make as the governing body here, is whether or not we put it forward or not. Okay? And, and that's what, and that's the way I look at it, is that that's what we're doing here. And I think that it does not mean that we're automatically gonna propose it. A lot of people will assume that that's what we're doing, because we're going through this exercise, that we're already gonna propose it. But it doesn't, it, from my perspective, that's not it. It either, you know, there, at some point, we're gonna have to make a choice, make a decision about what we're gonna do. Now, we, we ought to be able to have that freedom to make that decision one way or the other. And all we're asking them to do is to regather that information, and is there any further financial analysis stuff that's gonna work for this, and present it to us. And, you know, you can take a look at the numbers.
Okay, but my personal opinion, at this point, is not to put it on the ballot in April. So I have no interest in doing a committee. But that's my personal. That may not be the feeling. And that's why I'm saying that I would be voting against the committee, not because I don't think the committee is a good idea, it's because I don't think there's enough time and resources to be able to do it well enough to be prepared for April.
And I don't care if it's on the ballot or not. I can, I could go either way. If it's on it, it's on it. They say no, they should say yes, it's...
That's where I'm confused, but that's...
I don't see danger in it. You gotta, you gotta go after one, or, we're gonna, we know we're gonna do it a second time. We know we might do it a third time. So why wait? Get it on, move on.
Okay, so, did you withdraw, or we're gonna go with your motion?
I could start the motion again if I knew what it was. That was, what, 10 minutes ago? I want to form a committee.
And it was seconded by Bill.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Go, Finley.
Not to belabor it, but are we gonna, at some point, maybe the next meeting, decide with the makeup of this committee, and their charge of this committee, and all those things? Because I'm good with voting yes for this, but those are things that have to be talked about at some point.
The thing, we say yes tonight, we get it off the ground tomorrow. I mean, we'd be right, get it in the works.
Right, because we could spend another half hour determining a makeup of the committee, quite frankly. I know how we operate. And it's, it's, it could be going on and on, and I, I have all night, so it doesn't matter to me. But I think it would be better if we had something before us to act on.
Right. You wait another week. Paul, unfortunately, there's literally seven weeks. And that means, you have, and I, just to know, it's two nights a week, that's 14 meetings, you're gonna need 14, 10 to 14 meetings to get this accomplished. So it's vital that you say yes or no tonight, to get it off the ground. Because you, you skip it, you're not gonna get a good product. You need the time to put in to get what we need.
Do you want to say something?
Thank you. We can, if it behooves the council, we can advertise for the committee starting tomorrow, to get the ball rolling, so we'd have names ready for the 25th meeting, so that when you have the charge on the 25th, because that's the next time we're gonna meet in two weeks, to get the charge out there, we'd have people who are gonna volunteer by that time. So we can get that ball rolling down, down the road, so to speak, on that. Timeframe is really tight. The reasons why is basically you're looking at just the month of October. November's a very short month with Thanksgiving. CIP budget starts. Talking to the construction manager, when we, when, when I've met with him several times, you wanna be ready to go and hit the ground December 1st with your presentations, and start getting your, your, your groups in play, and, and talking to, to groups, and getting your constituents behind you, and answering the questions and things of that sort, and you, you full bore. It's a little late in the process right now to, to hire any kind of architect to do any kind of rendering of a, of a, of a facility, without putting significant time constraints. If we're not gonna go out tonight for an RFP process and that. But just, long story short, we'll do whatever the council wants, we'll, we'll get this ball rolling as, as quick as possible on this. But just beware that November is a very short month. And basically, you have the month of October, and maybe two weeks in the beginning of November to get this thing done.
Yes, Lon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I get the sense that if I were a member of the public watching us, and having just listened to Mr. McCauley, my first reaction would be, it's another rush job, we're not, that the council is not taking its own best advice, in terms of being sure that what they're presenting has had the benefit of the time for a myriad of people who, not only a citizen committee, or the best budget sense of this council, but contractors, architects, da-da-da-da-da-da, to really put a quality product forward. Not to belabor it, my mind hasn't been changed by the discussion tonight, from what I said last, two weeks ago. I'm very reluctant. I'm not reluctant to begin to go forward, but I will not support putting a town garage on the ballot, at least tonight, based on just what I've heard. Thank you.
Yes, John?
I've changed my mind. I agree. There's just, the timing of it, as I said...
I'm afraid to use that second shot up.
No, no, it's not, and it's not that. It's just, it's just the kind, the kind, the time constraint, okay, is too tight. We need to have started this in July. And we didn't do it. For a bunch of, a bunch of legitimate reasons.
Sure, sure.
Okay, we should have started this in July, and we didn't. And, you know, hearing you talk about it, and, you know, thinking about trying to do the numbers in my head, and try to do the scheduling in my head, you know, it doesn't work. For, you know, it doesn't, and like, and like Von said, you know, it looks like we're gonna try and shove something down people's throats, throats. And I, that ain't gonna work.
Okay, could I vote on the motion, however?
Nah, I take it back. I don't want, I don't want four-three or, four-three split, you know, this is something I'd rather feel we're all, we're all looking for the same interests. If the three of you are already against it, that's fine. I have no problem withdrawing that.
But I also don't disagree with your point. Let's try to clean it up a bit.
It could be a couple of years before we see a new garage, you know, maybe longer. Just, you know, take care of what we got in the meantime.
So can I understand the meaning?
Can I ask a question?
No.
Okay.
Yes, of course you can. Of course you can.
I agree with what Lon says, but that being said, is there any harm in getting a committee going right now, in, in moving forward? I mean, even though if, and I, if, if the consensus is that this is gonna be a rush job, and I agree that, yeah, we're gonna be jamming something down the voters' throats, and I don't want to do that, going to your point about second crack at the apple, then why wait? Get the committee going right now. Let's, I mean, if we're sincere about it, we're talking about it. We've already wasted, you know, 45 minutes or whatever. Okay, we've already utilized X number of minutes having the discussion.
Right. No, I don't disagree with that either. Okay, so am I getting the impression that the council, it wants to be able...
I, I just want to ask a simple question. Did the need for the highway garage go away because the bond didn't pass?
No.
And I believe the answer is clearly no. The, the need is still there, the discrepancies and, and things of that nature in the highway garage are still there, and they're not gonna go away, because we decided we didn't want to take a second bite at the apple. I'm a little disappointed, because I think it's very important that we move forward with things that are urgent... with things that are urgent, and I don't think we're starting at ground zero. As much as Dan is suggesting that we need 14 meetings to get through the information, I think a lot of that information is very valuable. I think we need to spend about half that amount of time to clean up, enhance, and, and really make sure that we come across even stronger with our message of what the requirements and the needs are. So I understand the, the concern about rushing it. I understand from just listening to what people have said that if I was in the public, I'd probably say the council has no interest in this, and I'm not gonna bother to vote for it. We've probably lost whatever percentage of the public we wanted to get just by the negativity we've been presenting here at this table. And we still absolutely need this to go forward. It's a need in this town. It has to go forward. We have to understand how to find a way to do that. So I, I don't, I don't think we, we really have options to, to not do it, to, to look away and say, we're not gonna worry about it. I think we're gonna find ourselves in a bind financially, employment-wise, and, and other things, you know. The state could come down and shut us down, and then we'd really be in deep water trying to figure out how to maintain vehicles and roads. And I don't want to try and scare anybody. You know, that's the last thing I want to do is tell you that if they shut us down, we're in deep, but we are. And the fact is that that's a bad situation there that gets worse on a daily basis instead of better. It's not gonna improve itself, and a coat of paint is not gonna fix the problem, and it's not gonna hold that building together.
Well, I do have to counter that, you're factually wrong. We looked into it. We're not bound by OSHA rules. We don't, when you're a public works garage, you can do it, you can put the exhaust pipe where you want it. They can't shut you down. It's unbelievable. It'll shut down a private mechanic, but you'd be amazed what municipalities can get away with. You don't have to follow regular laws. So that's the truth. Anybody want to disagree with me? Please speak up.
No, but you're, you're giving the impression that they're, that they're working in unsafe environment, and that's, and I don't think you want to do that.
If you've watched me for this long, I think you know my point, trying to make a big picture here, argument that this is a factual statement. We do not have to follow OSHA regulations on municipal property.
Tom, would you like to motion? I mean, I just, I'm trying to, yes, Lon, how to move it forward. I understand that.
I wouldn't want my remarks or thoughts to be misconstrued. I am not against accomplishing the task of a new highway garage. I recognize the need as well. But I've been around God's earth long enough to know that sometimes, and I'll use a phrase that my good friend and counselor man has used with me prior, sometimes it's best to make haste slowly. And I think for this counselor, that's where we're at. I'm not suggesting, Tom, that the need went away because 115 people didn't vote the right way on a ballot. What I'm saying is, we need to get it done in the fashion that we've all talked about and I think all agree on tonight. Thank you.
And if I'm, if I may, I was not trying to indicate any individual. I'm, I'm looking at the entire discussion of this council. And so I appreciate your comments, and I, my point was to bring back to the fact that there's a need and a reality.
There's certainly.
And, and we can't just say, well, we didn't, we weren't happy, so we'll walk away from this. We have to, to resolve it. So I would move that we proceed with the intent of being able to get it on the ballot with the understanding that, that the information that comes back to us may cause us to reconsider. But it, it certainly would be my intent to put it on the ballot this coming year. And I'd make the motion that we move forward with that intent.
Second.
I think we've discussed this long enough. Are we ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor of the motion? Tom Keenick?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against?
Aye.
The ayes have it, however. Four, three, and the one negative, Tom Leahy, myself, and Lon Woods. Okay, so you can pass the information on to Eileen, and we can proceed to plan for the membership. Yes?
And anybody at home, feel free to call the town manager and sign up to be on the New Highway Garage Committee, Part Two.
And while I'm very hesitant to do so, I'll volunteer my time to be on that committee as well. Since I have little time to volunteer.
And the first member is, is two in the back. Here's the third one for you. Thank you very much. Okay, under new business, noise ordinance proposal submitted by Stephen Tomaso. Come right up, please. You might can have a seat. Get comfortable. And I'm just gonna ask you to make sure that the light there, there's a button, that is bright green, there's a little button.
Touch it once and see what it changes to.
If it gets lighter, brighter.
It is bright.
Okay, terrific. Mr. Tomaso, you're going to request a noise ordinance specifically to roosters to be incorporated in our town ordinances and our regulations. And you now have the floor.
Thank you very much. Couple of weeks ago, I was here addressing the council in reference to a very noisy roosters, and that is plural. This whole thing came about because of frustration. After several weeks of trying to deal with a neighbor to control a rooster's noise or to eliminate the noise, and nothing was being done. I tried with the police department. Well, because we have no noise ordinance here or regulation or whatever term you wish to put on it in reference to roosters, the police department can't do nothing. So I went to the town management. The town management can do nothing. Excuse me, the town manager, excuse me. And, and the town office here. So I came to the town council for assistance. And I've asked for nothing more than, let's control noise. It has nothing to do about controlling animals. I love animals, I really do. This is all about controlling noise, and specifically, is it about roosters? Now, this evening, we heard Wendy, I believe, oh Wendy, thank you, say a few things about, and she's the instructor that's giving the classes, and I learned a few things. And I really appreciate it, and the fact that she's willing to do calling, I believe you call it. Wonderful, if you could do that, right? Again, this is about controlling noise or eliminating noise. That's all we ask. Well, because of the frustration that I and my family have been going through for many, many weeks, we cannot use our deck, we cannot use our yacht from 5:00, 5:30 in the morning. I can't have breakfast without listening to roosters, lunch, dinner, so on and so forth. Company comes over, we hear crowing all day long. So it was because of frustration is the reason why I did the wording the way I did. Does it have to be that strong? No, it doesn't. But we have to start somewhere, and I'm willing to talk about it and to negotiate. I, I'm not gonna read this whole thing. We've already spent 45 minutes on other subjects.
Yeah.
But I've also included... You're welcome. Also included noise, or captions for noise ordinances in reference to Manchester and also in reference to Nashua, our two neighboring communities. Those two communities, and the way those ordinances or sub-ordinances are written will satisfy the issue. And I've discussed this with the, the police department. If, if that is what it takes to control the issue, then so be it. I will be a very happy camper, and not only myself, but other people in town. There are, there are a few people in town who own roosters, and they're keeping the roosters quiet. How they're doing it, I don't know. Maybe they have one of those collar things. I don't know. Right? And I'm sure those neighbors appreciate it. But there are other neighbors around in, without, within the town that have roosters next door to them or a property beyond that that are very frustrated. And they know they can't do anything because we can't, we don't have an ordinance. So whatever terminology we, we use, however we reword it, if it's nothing more than take the, the dog barking noise ordinance that we have and add it to that, I will be very, very happy. I'm getting off my bandwagon now.
Thank you. Okay, Finley?
Mr. Tomaso, I was just curious. Have you ever had difficulties with your neighbor prior to this rooster incidents, incident? I'm just curious.
Yep, yep, there was issues with dirt bikes and lack of mufflers and motorcycle with straight, running straight pipes a few years back.
And the reason, I, I was just curious because really, in suburban America or whatever we call ourselves, it's, you know, it's one of those things where, you know, property lots get smaller and smaller, and you would always hope that your neighbor would be, you know, courteous to your request and so on.
I would love that to be, yes.
So I was, I, I was wondering on that, and I did have one other question, and somebody else might have to ask you because I'll have to come back to it. Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll think of it in a second.
Okay, any other thoughts expressed?
Somebody's gotta give me time to think here.
Give it time. I'll stick around.
Well, I, I mean, I guess I didn't see an ordinance in this, in this draft, and, and I appreciate that the final wording's not necessarily here because there's a lot of thoughts put down in here, and some of them, I think, go a little extreme, as was pointed out by other people. In fact, we have a letter from Bob McCabe saying that the agricultural commission would not endorse this type of ordinance. And what he's not clear about is it, is it the specific detail or the extent, or is there some way to make a compromise that would, in fact? Because an ordinance like this could impact all of the small farmers and whatnot in town.
Yes.
And we have to be careful and understand how that far-reaching effect goes. There's been discussion of noise ordinances in the past. It's always been extremely difficult to figure out, how do you police or how do you control or how do you manage something like that? And what impacts do those have? So I, I, I'm open to discussion. I think what you have here goes a little extreme in a couple of cases. But, but like I said, there's no clear line here. In the middle of it, you talk about the, the courses that are offered by Ms. Thomas at the, at the high school. I mean, that's not part of the ordinance, I guess, but I...
No, the, the bold letters, which I was hoping were, were, were right on, proposed ordinance, there were two sentences. And the rest is, is backup information.
Okay, well, that, okay. That's clearly not enough information, in my opinion, for us to be able to enforce anything.
Okay. But as you had mentioned, that, am I willing to meet somewhere in, in the middle? Yeah, I, I am totally open for discussion on this here. And as I mentioned a few moments ago, if we do nothing more than complement the ordinance or whatever we call it with reference to barking dogs, and we incorporate this into that, right, I will be very, very happy. And I totally agree that when, whether it's, it's a neighbor or the police department or someone from the council goes to the person who is, owns, owns the animal that's causing the issue, right, and has a discussion, and you try to work with it, and it takes one or two phone calls and it works done, and they have to find someone like Wendy to, okay, come over, it's gonna take a couple of days to get this thing ironed out. Oh, yes, I understand that. Right? It, it's like being a parent and growing up kids, and you have, have to work with it. But from my standpoint, it's frustration. So I went to this extreme in hopes that we can meet somewhere near the middle. But if, again, if we do nothing more than, say, barking dogs and/or roosters, I will be very happy. I just want to be able to use my deck again.
As was pointed out, roosters is not the only problem with respect to birds. You know, we have to be a little bit careful and not suddenly discriminate or limit ourselves to a point where we're gonna be coming back six months later and saying, well, or angry hens, or, you know, hawks that come around, or, you know, things of that nature.
Well, I've never heard of a hen crowing, so I learned that this evening, too.
Yeah, I hadn't either.
Yep.
Pigs can be pretty noisy, too, you know.
Pigs, and they can be smelly, and there was a line in here about keeping odors at your property line, which is probably pretty difficult, but...
I just need some assistance. I need some help. And there have apparently been some other people have made a similar complaint to the police department. I don't know who they are. Apparently it came in anonymous. I just found out that I'm not the only one. I just happen to be the abutter.
Yes?
In my attempt on keeping it simple, which I thought from the beginning was the, the last line on the first page where it's bold, if, if there's some hole in a legal matter, why, we couldn't have just a simple ordinance of saying, no person shall keep of any animal or bird by which causing frequent or long-continued noise shall disturb the comfort or repose of any person and neighboring premises? And then you leave it there. And the phone rings, the police department will be called, and then the, and the police make a judgment call. Is it a dog that's barking for six hours straight? Is it, did the crow, and this isn't just crow at 5:30 and hasn't been heard from now since? They'll have to actually be a witness and make a judgment call. But if you keep it simple, and you're only gonna get a phone call when, when a neighbor's having a problem, then you deal with it then. Again, as I had stated previously about the police discretion role of what they do, I mean, they, you know, this is part of what, what they do, whether it's disturbing the peace, whether they, someone, a neighbor thinks some ordinances, you know, many people have called about hunters being on their land and, and, you know, so illegal fires, et cetera. I mean, if there's any way, not just to help you, sir, because I, I'm not, I don't think we're here to really just, you know, to have an individual complaint addressed. I think it's, a lot of other people in town might appreciate the same thing. But keeping it simple seems to me to be the key.
It doesn't have any consequence, though. What happened if they don't?
Again, it, Tom?
Well, I, as, as Dan has pointed out, this is, and others have, this is a collection of thoughts of what they, things that they would like to do. There's no context in here, pulling things out of ordinances, you know, and, and when you deal with these kinds of things, you have to take the whole document itself or the whole context of the document itself to see how it fits in, and you can't, you can't get it from here. Now, granted, you're not experienced at this kind of thing, okay? So, you know, so please, I'm...
I smell a committee forming.
Not me. That, you know...
Right, and if you, but in all due respect, if you're actually going to take it on, then it would have to be taken on in a certain manner in a subcommittee.
Yes, it would.
Right. And whether it gets adopted or not is another discussion, but...
One of these, this goes back to the difficulties we've had with other noise ordinance proposals we're, we're here. Who makes the judgment? How is that judgment made? Okay? And what, and, and what's the sanction? And, you know, you know, I mean, he, and, and one, and one thing in here, he has a, he has a violation, and you go further down to the last one, and he's got it as a misdemeanor. Okay? You can go to jail for up to a year for a misdemeanor. So, you know, it, it, it's not something I want to tackle because I just don't have that, I could do it, but I, I, one, I don't have the time, and two, I don't think it's, there's too many moving, potentially moving parts in this that you get tripped up in. Okay? So I'm, I'm not saying that it can't be done, I'm just saying that based on this, it's kind of tough to decide what you'd want to do and how you would want to do it.
And whatever would be considered should be reviewed by the police department to be able to have some feedback related to them being able to do it, to be able to cover.
Then, then the town attorney to determine whether or not it would be legally enforceable.
Okay.
Okay? So...
I mean, we've had complaints in the past, construction noise going on all summer long. You know, I, and that's, I don't know if it's an overall, all-round noise ordinance. I know Mr. Tomaso's interested in the rooster, that's, because that's what's really bugging the heck out of him now. But your neighbor kid all summer long playing his junk music that you might not care for because you're 55 years old or whatever.
With a jackhammer at 3:00 in the morning.
Right, so there's, so it has to be, I mean, that whole thing, it really is, you know, could become and should be comprehensive and all-encompassing if we're gonna, if something like this were to happen. But the amount of effort is enormous, I think, as Tom has already spoken to. But there's down the street, down on Route 3, there's a family who has a video, a neighbor who videotapes their backyard. And so they put a fence in front of the camera. The guy raised the fence. Now, the fence is like 16, 20 feet tall, and the camera's over that still. And that's probably even more offensive to me when you have young daughters in your house than, than the doggone rooster is, and that is offensive, I'm sure. house than the doggone roosters, and that is offensive, I'm sure.
That's old-fashioned, now they just use drones.
So anyhow, if, I think, I mean, to have a noise ordinance, it should be all-encompassing as opposed to, you know, point-specific for a single animal. It should be, the whole thing would have to be looked at, and it has been discussed over the years on a few occasions. And it's a mighty task to bring it to a conclusion, to make it so it is something that would work and is enforceable, and so on, but...
It seems, it seems like a somewhat trivial thing. You just put down a statement that says, "Don't carry, don't have noisy animals on your property," or something like that. But it becomes much, much more complicated. If you go back and you look at the situation that we've had in the past with the sign ordinance in town, it's just absolutely incredible how difficult it is to get some, some people or some group of people to agree that this is an enforceable and actionable ordinance. And signs, I mean, we all have our own understanding and feeling of what's inappropriate and what's bad about the way signs are put up around the, around the town. But to be able to try and delineate that into an ordinance that you can then enforce and not feel like you're overreaching or, or something like that has been very difficult. So, I guess I'm agreeing with them that this, this is overly simplified, might have some purpose, but I'm not sure how enforceable it ends up being. And we have to, we'd certainly have to get involved with lawyers and with police and things like that, to see if there's anything, if there's no teeth in it, if it doesn't do anything, then it's just, we're just going through the motions and we're not accomplishing anything.
Okay, then the question for me is, how do we get something accomplished? I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a councilman. These here, I was trying to get the point across, this is bold, this is what I do, excuse me. The rest of this is backup information that I wanted to present to you in writing, rather than spending hours talking about it, so you have something to digest.
I'd like to answer you.
Yes, sir.
One of us would have to step up and form, inform the committee, and would, a subcommittee would have to be formed, and it would take several months, just like the sign ordinances that, that worked on and then didn't go through. But the process of what, to answer you, how do you get acknowledged and get this off the ground? One of us, seven, have to step up and say, "I'm going to make a motion, form a committee, and get someone to second it," and then it would, the body would, the rock would start to roll.
I'm not sure if we'd have to vote on it, or we'd have a...
It's even simpler than that. Direct the town manager to contact the town attorney and have him develop, there's enough here for him to take a look at the intent, to look at the intent, to do that.
But that's the answer to his question.
Yeah. Okay, so, you know, that's, 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 you know, for us to form a committee to sit there and do something, then you're, you know, it, you're going to have to run it by them anyway, so you might as well start from there.
Sure, that works.
Okay? If that's what you really want to do. So, that's, that's the simple, in my, from my perspective, it's the simplest and most direct way to do it. Because when you start thinking about this exception and that exception, and what about this and what about that?
All-encompassing.
And what about every other darn thing that you gotta, that you gotta think about? You know...
I know, we have decibels, is that going to be measurement of, like, when you're talking about noise, not roosters necessarily. But that was part of the discussion I remember having. How do you measure and what the consequences? And do the consequences change based upon whether it's an animal or a constriction or...
Unless the majority of us, I can foresee, want us to give Eileen that charge, because the majority of us in the end would be saying yes to a noise ordinance in town.
Correct.
And I'm not saying I'm in favor, favor of it or not, at this point, I don't, I don't really know.
Me, as a resident, how can I coax you, persuade you, whatever terminology we want to do, to go to the town manager and say, "Town manager, talk to the town lawyer," or whatever that person's title is?
You've done it already.
So, where do we go from here?
We're contemplating it.
We're contemplating it, and we're going to have to...
Seems to want to raise their hand.
Does someone make a, want to make a motion? That's what we'd have to have.
No, I'm just explaining, I was just giving the answers.
And if we don't get a motion, then we just take it under advisement.
Right?
Right, I would need some input from Eileen, because I, again, I see this as a monster task, I truly do. When I sat on the Charter Commission, that's when I had my trial by fire, that's when I learned at what level of, you know, sanity almost, in order to make sure it all worked from the beginning of the document to the very end, and it all meshed together and covered everything you needed. And that's still being amended every once in a while to a small degree, but it, it's a huge task. So, I, I think that, yes, Matt Upton could sit there and throw something together, but I already know what it's going to be like. It's going to be a basic thing, or maybe boilerplate from another community, which maybe is what we should look at in the first place, see what smaller towns, I think Manchester or Nashua aren't necessarily, you know, what we should be looking for, would be other similar communities and so on, I would think, I don't know.
Probably the harder to find, they're probably not, smaller communities don't have them.
Well, actually, Mr. Tomaso did name a few towns, but I didn't pay close attention to it, but, okay, Massachusetts, and then around the country, different places. But anyhow, that's...
Well, that's the thing, in New Hampshire, they're rare, and most towns don't have them.
I believe you're right, Dan. I think most of the towns do not.
That's the problem, the boilerplate, right? So unless you adopt the city one with variations, that's your boilerplate, you've got to start with there first, then cut back.
Yeah, if we, I mean, for me, I'd like to have input from Eileen.
Input doesn't commit us one way or the other. I mean, I can't, I'm not opposed to seeking input from the town manager, can move forward with just that alone and see what, she'll make some calls, and at least give us a preview of what lies ahead.
Be involved.
We'll have a better discussion after that.
Okay, so am I, am I getting the sense that no one wants to make a motion? But we will seek advice from...
Town manager?
The town manager regarding the feasibility, or what would be involved in it? Is that a reasonable reading of everyone? Okay, so be it. So, we're going to have the town manager look into it and advise us as to the, what would be involved in providing, establishing an ordinance? And we're going to try to, and I think it's reasonable that it be a comparable town. Manchester's a city, and I think there should be a...
We're talking full noise ordinance, rooster ordinance?
Give us some ideas.
I mean, if Eileen thinks it should be specific to this issue right here alone, but it just makes sense that it would have to be something different.
Yeah, give us her opinion. But my only parameter, my only parameter is that it's with a comparable community.
Understand that, as of Monday, she's going to be out of the office.
So, we're going to have to wait till she returns?
For a fair amount of time, so...
We'll have to wait till she returns?
Then, then Mr. Tomaso needs to know that.
Yeah, she's going to be out for a little...
But I think that, you know, one of the, as I said earlier, a request to the town attorney to, you know, here's the parameters, here's the, what the resident has provided to us, here's our concern, is that we, you know, we're sort of concerned about the city, a city ordinance as opposed to something with a comparable town. Does he know of anything?
Yeah, give us his opinion, I'm okay with that. Is that okay with everyone else?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to have the attorney advise us.
Thank you very much. And can we try to keep it simple so that the average person understands it? Without getting into all the...
Believe me, if we can get away with simple, we can get away with simple, but we have to be clear enough that there's, it's not left up to interpretation either. There has to be enough clarity.
Reason why I'm saying this is, when I read through, I'm going to use Nashua as an example. To me, as a resident, it was very, very clear. Right? It didn't pick up on just the rooster, or whatever case might be, but as a resident, it made it very, very clear.
I mean, it says, "Noise would annoy and disturb a person of normal sensibilities." I know what that means, but boy, you could have, you don't know this person, they haven't got normal senses. And those are the kind of things you want to be able to have as objective as possible.
Yeah.
So that the police don't have to get into this interpretation. So that's what the advice we'll get from the attorney.
Okay. So, as of this moment in time, as a person speaking about this here, I have no recourse other than to listen to the roosters. That's what I'm taking away from this.
For the present, for present.
Sir, I, I think you put in here that grandfathering would not be allowed. I think we will constantly find ourselves up against a legal barrier if we suddenly say that you can't grandfather, and we're going to go back in time and implement and enforce this ordinance across the board.
No, that wasn't the intent of that paragraph. No, the intent of that paragraph is for someone to say, "My, I've been doing, raising roosters for X amount of years. I've been doing it for two years now. The ordinance takes effect November 1st. Well, because I did before November 1st, I don't have to listen to the roosters." That's what I was referring to. Not that we're going to go back in time and saying, "You owned roosters prior to," and we're going to take the roosters away. That was not the intent.
Well, I'm still not sure that we're going to be able to pursue that argument.
Yes, Penley, go ahead, Penley.
Actually, in Mr. Tomaso's case, he's been there a long time, so I think the roosters are a relatively new thing. However, I do have problems with people who have been, I'm thinking in Goffstown, there was a pig farm, they built all kinds of homes around it, and the new homeowners are against it now. And so they came down on the guy, they used the DES in order to harass him and try and put him out of business. But he was there for decades, and I thought it inappropriate that he be harassing that. The Fishing Game Club in Nashua, they have a gun range there. In Hollis, they actually really had a real problem there, where they, the new homeowners, brand-new homes built around it, they wanted it to stop. And that, that I have a problem with. I don't think that fits for you, because like I say, I think you've been there much longer than the roosters.
But that is the complicating factors.
But that's the problem, yeah.
That's right. Those are the nuances that you have to think of.
Yeah.
Yes, no? Okay? Okay, and I believe that Mr. Currie wanted to be, first of all, any more additional information you want to tell us?
No. Going away frustrated, but, no. But I, again, I want to thank everyone here for allowing me to spend a small amount of minutes and hearing me for the second time venting on this here. And anything at all that you can do to help alleviate not only my issue, my family's issue, but other people in the town who are literally afraid to speak up because of repercussions from their, their neighbors. And I've had people in town since the last time I was here that I've talked to that have actually said, "I don't want to speak up because I'm afraid." It's a hell of a society we live in, isn't it?
I would, I personally, if it's okay, like, have letters sent. I would want to know who it was, but if they put confidential or something, I think...
Yeah, they don't have to put their name.
It wouldn't go anywhere. For me, I, I would like to know. Anonymously, that's just too, you know, that doesn't carry the same weight, but if, I'd like to hear the complaints, but...
Well, all I can do is relate to them, now whether they pass it on.
Sure, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you, folks.
Mr. Currie, I saw you waving back there, you wanted to have a word?
The reason why I'm here tonight is, I am a member of the Agriculture Commission, and Bob McCabe, who's the chairman, you have a letter following me, he wasn't here, able to come tonight. But what I wanted to respond to was the fact of Mr. Tomaso's problem with his neighbor. Our taxes pay for the Hillsborough County Commission, the Hillsborough County Commission. George Hamilton, who works for them, is an advisor, he comes around to our farm, he comes to different farms around, but...
Eber, excuse me, do you mean the cooperative extension, sir?
Cooperative extension, yes. In Hills, in Goffstown. I was in hopes that maybe the two neighbors could get together, and the neighbor that has the roosters that are given the problem, if they could only get in touch with George Hamilton at the cooperative's extension, and his number is... And I'm quite sure that he, our taxes pay for their support, so it's a public service. So, he would be able to come out and discuss with the neighbor, to Mr. Tomaso's neighbor, as to how to properly address the noise that the roosters are making. I know Wendy had indicated there might be some throat therapy, as well as muzzling, but there's, there's other things that can be done, too, and they're experienced at it. And I think that, rather than go to the, all the efforts of developing a noise ordinance for the town, because the noise ordinance incorporates a lot of different things. And in speaking with the Department of Agriculture, Gail McWilliams, Gail McWilliams-Jelly, she's a director of the New Hampshire Department of Agriculture, and she says she wants us to be cautious. She says, "If the town does decide to take and establish a noise ordinance, that they be specific about it." By being specific, it would be addressed just of the noise that the hens are making, that the roosters are making, not other noise that a tractor might be making early in the morning and so forth, so that it wouldn't impact farmers that are, that make noise, that they have to do, it's necessary for them to make a noise. But, you know, in 30 years that I've been farming here in Merrimack, this is the first time that I have ever heard of a noise from a foul, turkeys, hens, what have you, impacting another neighbor. It's the first time I've ever heard it come before a town council, or previous to that to the ordinance. So I don't think it's something that's common. And as you say, other towns, there's only two other towns that I, cities, two other cities in New Hampshire that I know of that has a noise ordinance, Concord is one of them, Manchester's the other one.
And they're cities.
The other towns just don't, it's not something that's a common thing to do. And when you do develop your, if you do decide that you have to do, develop an ordinance, please restrict it to...
Gotcha. Specifics.
Be specific about it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Currie. Mr. Tomaso can probably, if you could share that phone number with him, I don't think he had heard it. That's all right. He had a phone number that he was suggesting you contact.
This is George Hamilton.
For a cooperative extension who might help you.
Okay. And I would be willing, I don't know who your neighbor is, but I would be willing to contact your neighbor, suggest to him that he contacts George Hamilton, and George would be able to come out and talk to him about probably helping to curb the noise.
Okay, so you can just, you can go over there, Eber, and actually give him the number.
Okay, his, the number is 641-6060.
Thank you very much, Mr. Currie, appreciate it. You can make another comment if you'd like, I'm allowing it. If it were a really heavy-duty night, I wouldn't, but... If it was 9:30, I'd think of you.
Again, Wendy Thomas, Ten Wildcat Falls. With respect to the complaints, I'm surprised to, to hear Eber say that, that it's a rare occasion, because from my experience, it is not a rare occasion. With, with the popularity of backyard poultry, people are getting roosters, and a lot of, a lot of the times, they have a rooster and they don't even know they have it, so by the time they find out it's a rooster, it's become a pet. With smaller flocks, people are confusing, not in a bad way, but, but, you know, livestock is becoming pets now. I mean, I had one chicken that would jump into my lap and fall asleep. I mean, they're, they're like dogs almost these days. And with, with respect to the gentleman with the, with the neighbor problem, a rooster crow, I mean, everybody's been brought up on cartoons, you think that a rooster crows when the sun comes up. A rooster crows to warn the flock. So at night, if there's a dog walking by the coop, the rooster will crow. If there's a skunk walking by the coop, the rooster will crow. If a branch falls on the coop, the rooster will crow. We've had roosters, and trust me, it sounds and it feels like somebody's putting a drill into your head. I mean, it is not a pleasant thing, and I totally, totally understand his frustration. And so, when you're in close proximity to neighbors, roosters, it is a problem. It is a problem, and it's going to get, it's going to get more, it's going to get bigger with more people getting, getting backyard chickens. In Concord, I gave a presentation, and I realize Concord's a city, but what they said is you're allowed to have a flock of five hens on your property with no roosters. I mean, they just, they just cut roosters out altogether. I'm not suggesting that for the reasons I said earlier. We can't do that. But I, roosters crowing is going to be a problem, and you're going to see more and more of it.
Thank you very much. Okay, well said. With that, for the moment, okay, for the moment. Certainly. Can't say no to you, Pete, when I've said yes to everybody else. If you'd like to stand or sit, whatever you'd like to do.
I'm going to pass this around, so hopefully this will resolve many of your problems and hopefully address the gentleman's problems. And I'll try to be as brief as possible.
Just get the mic. Get the microphone, Pete, so everyone else can hear you.
Thank you. A little closer.
I have a copy also for the gentleman, if he wishes. Somehow this got punted to the Agricultural Commission and, for whatever reason. But I don't believe that this, this issue has been clearly established to be related to agriculture in that, in the sense that agriculture is a permitted use in the town of Merrimack, and it is governed by state laws, R. 2134A. Anybody growing or selling products, meats, or anything else has to meet certain state standards. Also, to maintain their licenses with the state, you have to take courses and get certified every, every three years in order to get through that. So what I'm trying to do, point out here, is I'm just going to skip over that first part of agriculture because I have not heard that that is an issue of agriculture. It does appear to me that this is an issue of land uses or nuisance ordinances. But if, for some reason, this gets dragged into the issue of agriculture on page 2-6, in the permitted uses, item 2, farming, gardening, nursery, forestry, harvesting, grazing, et cetera, and similar agricultural activities, the change of land to one or more agricultural use as defined herein or the expansion of an existing agricultural use shall be subject to non-residential site review by the planning board. So if somebody were to come in with an issue, they wanted to put up a hen house or whatever, the chances are zero, zero, zero of getting that through. But it requires planning board approval, and if even if you change the use, still requires planning board approval. This goes back into the 1980s, late 1980s, early 1990s, when these laws were established. So subsequently, I'm just trying to point that out, that any existing use that is agricultural must conform to best management practices, dealing with noise, smoke, or applications of pesticides, that type of thing.
So Peter, you're suggesting that, are you suggesting that if someone gets a flock of chickens, whether or without a rooster, doesn't matter, that that changes, that puts them into this situation, where they should come to the planning board?
No, not at all. Absolutely not.
I don't think the planning board would be happy.
Because I'm going to get, hopefully come up with an answer here.
Gotcha.
If you go to 2-7, in the permitted uses, this has to do with, in all the districts in the town of Merrimack, no use of any kind shall be permitted in the district if it anyway would be injurious, noxious, offensive by way of odors, fumes, smoke, dust, vibrations, noise, light, or objectional features, or if it would be hazardous to the community on a counterfire explosion or other cause. The planning board shall adopt standards and regulations as it may deem necessary in order to help ascertain conformity of these regulations. And we, we do have the regulations, and I'm going to get right to them as quickly as possible. The, and we have applied the regulations to blasting, stone crushing. We have applied the regulations to noises, certain noises that were affecting neighborhoods and that, that type of thing, and have been successful. Jay McCarr, Walter Warman, all were the enforcers of this. Jay is also a juris doctor. And so we do have regulations, and I think you'll see this whole thing coming together. There are permitted uses in the residential district, home occupations is essentially one of them. So subsequently, in our, in our regulations, we deal with the issue quite comprehensively. Issues of signs, we deal with the noise issues, blasting issues, a whole host of things. And we can adopt standards in accordance to that, and it would be enforceable under the town zoning ordinances. Now, if you, as council, wish to proceed on and adopt your own ordinances, that would be fine, too. But I think that when you look at these ordinances and their prohibitions and things like that, that you, when you study these very carefully, you might want to confer with your town council on this, then you would probably, probably might address the questions that gentleman has as well as questions that you might have.
So are you suggesting, Pete, that Mr. Tomaso would be wise in talking to the community development person in terms of these? Do you think that would be a useful thing to advise him?
There's an issue here that, that seems to surface that the town of Merrimack doesn't, does not have noise regulations. And the fact is, it has it through its zoning ordinances, okay? So it, if somebody comes up and says, "We can't do anything about this. It's outside the law." I'm sorry, I disagree with that entirely. People have to work together. They have to live together. They have, and neighborhoods, neighbors don't want, don't want to do that. If you can't work it out, then enforcement's going to step in, whether it be the police or whether it be zoning administrators.
Dan?
To back Pete up, he's right. And the best page is number 2-7, the general prohibition, is the first paragraph he read, he wrote. But sadly, you have no authority to enforce. So he's technically right. It's, here it is. It's spelled out pretty plainly. But then you're left with the police and, and the, and an ordinance that has some type of legal bearing at that point to make someone stop, and so they don't. So I think he is technically right, and it's spelled out very plainly.
But it has no teeth to it.
But he's got no teeth to it. So the planning board has set up this, and then there it is, in black and white, says it, dust, smoke, et cetera. But there's no enforcement to it.
Well, I think that means, right, because I, for me, I think it means differently.
That's not quite true, because when they were doing the blasting for the outlet malls, okay, they were quite active in dealing with the constraints. And they went to great lengths during the site review process to determine some pretty, you know, detailed...
Decimal meters.
Detailed methodologies and, and issues on how they were going to determine whether or not the blaster was within the requirements that they had set up.
But they took that on as a separate construction zone project? That hadn't never been done before in town before?
No, no, no. That came under the purview that he's talking about here, okay? That they have control over, that they have some, that they have some...
And police department personnel enforced it.
No, they didn't. They had other measurements.
The fire department was the one.
I meant to say fire department, right.
So I mean, they were, because of the fire marshal, and they're the, they're the regulator.
Right.
By state law, they're the, they're the regulator of that in the town, is the fire department. So that's who, that's who we, they were going to, and community development was going to. They were going to the, the fire department, and, okay, here's, here's the circumstances. Here's what happened, and then based on the report they got from them, they then went to blast and say, "Okay, on this occasion, for this blast, you were in violation."
And the complaints had to go through the fire department.
Right, and the complaints went through the fire department. I'm sort of wondering, because it says adopt such standards and regulations that may deem necessary in order to help ascertain conformity with the above regulations, how they're going to deal with farm animals?
Right.
Okay?
Right.
What, what standards are, what standards and regulations might they have to deal with that?
It's not there.
So, you know, that's, you know, that's part of the, part of, part of, you know, part of the issue. So while there's, there are applications in here where they do have some control over them, and they do have authority over them by law, okay? It's not as all-encompassing as some people might think.
Would you agree with that, Mr. Gagnon?
No, not exactly. The reason being that we, we develop standards and regulations dealing with noise. We have to wrestle with the issue of decibels, the issue of the distance between where the noise is coming from.
Where would you find those standards? Where would, Mr. Tomaso, find those standards?
The final standards?
Where would you find the standards?
The, well, we, we applied those standards with the, a number of times. One, there was a rock crusher placed in a, near a residential area. We, the administrator shut that down. They had to come in with a complete plan and their decibels, how they're going to attenuate it, how they're going to handle the dust, that type of thing. Because it was very, very annoying. The other one had to do with the Merrimack outlets, as you were. We had, we had to have sensors out there to measure the decibels of the blast and all bunch of issues. I'm sure Nancy, you recall everything that took place back there. And those standards are referenced in, in the noise standards and noise regulations, which I had not dug out and brought up here. We can reference those at any time within the framework of the ordinances. I'm just saying that there are ways of doing this. But I think that that probably would be the better way overall. But if you choose to write your own ordinance, that's fine, too.
So would the advice to Mr. Tomaso, that's what I'm trying to figure out. Would the advice, would the advice to Mr. Tomaso be to go in that direction with the, with the zoning, rather than a noise ordinance?
Yes, well, that, that could be done, too, because it is, but I'm just trying to point out that this has no direct relationship to an agricultural use. So it's a non-conforming use that is creating noises or creating situations that are untenable in a neighborhood.
Okay, okay, thank you.
That helped.
If you want to come up, Yellen. Thank you, Mr. Gagnon. I appreciate your bringing that information. And maybe we can give a copy of that to Mr. Tomaso.
Yeah, I'll take one of those. I won't take up all your time. I know this isn't public hearing. Thanks for letting me speak. It's Mike Malzone of 8 East Chamberlain Road. I tried to make it at the beginning for the public comments, but I've had the noise issues. I've come before you all and begged for help. I've been to the planning board at the initial planning stages to beg for help. Been to the zoning board and been to community development. Nobody can help you in the town if there's a noise problem. If you need to volunteer on the committee, I'll be happy to throw my name in the hat. But there's no place to go. There's no place to go, and it's a serious problem. I begged all of you. I described what I transferred, because the thing is, people aren't nice anymore. People aren't good neighbors and aren't good stewards of businesses in the town, where if you had a problem, you could go, and they'd be like, "Jeez, I didn't realize that. We'll straighten it out." Now you get threatened with, wait till the next part of my project, because I have two more stages going. Something needs to be done. And, and I'm begging you to talk to the town manager about that, to see if we can get going with some type of generic noise ordinance. It's, we're not reinventing the wheel here. You're making it sound like it's going to be a huge thing. We have piles of paperwork in this town. A couple more pages won't hurt anyone. I really appreciate you letting me talk, because you guys have a long night ahead of you. Thank you.
Penley, did you want...
Just real quickly, yes. I know Mike's situation, because I actually went to community development about it. And they told me that in order for that to be, the contractor, the...
It was 2:00 in the morning.
The storage place across the street from his home was working all weekend long, in the middle of the night, because he was pouring these big concrete slabs. He claimed he had to. I didn't believe it. But in order for that to be enforceable, it had to be put, discussed, and put in the site plan process.
And with all due respect for the police department to look at me and say, "There's nothing that we can do." I looked, and I says, "If I was playing music loud at my house, you would do something about it." They had huge lights, like Foxborough Stadium lights, lighting up the whole neighborhood, pouring concrete and sheet metal at 2:00 in the morning, and nobody can do anything about that?
So they couldn't stop them, which is why I think, what I was going to say earlier, and I didn't want to keep going on, but here I am. I, most of the things that Pete brings to us in this paperwork is normally when they are citing, you know, citing the, the projects and so on. There is no way that the community development's going to enforce the rooster crowing at any time. It just isn't going to happen, so...
But there are other circumstances in the town with other issues. And that's why I'm saying, just over the rooster, let's just not drop this.
Yeah, well, we've already got a directive to give us a beat.
Yeah, thank you so much for letting me talk. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further questions?
Any questions to me say?
Thank you for your...
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Pete. Appreciate it.
Okay, all set. Let's go on to the next. Okay, number two. Merrimack Lions Club request to hold fundraiser at Watson Park, submitted by Parks and Rec Committee member Laura James. To consider the Merrimack's request to sell scarecrow kits, and I'll let you do it. And you've even got samples here.
Good evening, Laura James, and we have something fun to crow about for community spirit.
You've been waiting all night to say that, haven't you?
And it doesn't make any noise. But it's, it is a, an effort on the Lions Club's effort to spearhead this fundraiser, which my colleague Pat Fuller of the Lioness, the Lions Club, is here to present to you. We have a couple of silent volunteers over there.
Right.
Parks and Rec did review this back in July or August, and we have recommended it as a community effort, community spirit, to raise money. And she's looking, she'll tell you, she's looking for places to do these things.
Right. The Merrimack Lions Club is having this scarecrow fundraiser for diabetes. And we thought it would be a fun project. As you know, our motto is "We Serve," and the Lions do a lot for the town. We do free hearing and screening in our school systems. And so now we're trying to do something for diabetes. And I came up with this fundraiser idea because I was in the town of Chester and, last fall, and I was driving around, and I saw their cute scarecrows. And I contacted the woman in charge, and she gave me permission to steal her idea and bring it to Merrimack. And so I took several members with me, and we came up with an idea for the T-frame and the head. So it's a scarecrow kit for $20, and then you create whatever you want. Here's an example. We did a lion club member. But if you saw our publicity in the paper, we've also done Cat in the Hat and all sorts of things. We've donated scarecrows to the police department. They're currently have a volunteer dressing one up. And we've given one to the fire department. And, um, we've given one to the fire department, they're on board, and they're going to, um, have some little inner contest amongst themselves, and they're hoping maybe to put it up on the fire, um, house, um, so when people go by, they see it. Um, we've given one to the DPW, and is he still here? No. And he's, um, said he's gonna try to make something out of it, and the MYA. So, we're trying to really bring the community together with this project for such a good cause. And our request, why I'm here today, is, um, we, um, came to Parks and Rec and asked if we could have the visibility to put our scarecrows at Watson Park as people drive by, and on Saturdays, um, sell them there. Right now, currently, the library has, um, they've, um, given, been gracious enough to let us, um, sell them on Saturdays, um, from, uh, eleven to one, or ten to one, and, um, for the months of September and October. And they're on board too, we've given them, um, two of them, they're gonna make theirs into Watson and his assistant, and that's, um, they're on board with, um, a mystery theme for their October theme. So, we would just like, um, permission to use Watson Park on Saturdays as another location to sell these.
And if they get, can get enough volunteers, perhaps the dump or some of the places.
Yeah, or maybe some other places.
This is the first year they've, are attempting this.
Right, and we don't know if we're gonna have enough volunteers to go to all these different places in town, but we just want permission so that we don't step on anybody's toes and, you know, we go through the proper channels.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Pat, are you, when you're out there on Saturday, are you gonna have the display? You have like scarecrows lining the, the entrance to Watson Park or somewhere where there's visibility, and it's only gonna be on Saturday that you're gonna be doing that? Okay?
Yeah, I'm, you know, we've gotta have enough memberships, but my hope is that we'll sell some at the library on Saturdays and some at Watson Park, so we'll have two different locations.
And it's our hope, perhaps, we can do something at the haunted walk, you know, have a culmination of it.
That's a good idea.
At the haunted walk at Watson at some point, just to kind of pull it together.
Well, you could have a zombie apocalypse.
What's that?
Zombie apocalypse.
You could have a zombie apocalypse.
And, um, I don't know, do you also control the soccer fields in town, um, where Reed's Ferry? Someone, no, that's something else, okay? Okay, I didn't know if they've been schooled.
School property.
School property.
It might, it might be worth a shot, though.
The MYA has the permission of the school district to use the property.
So, go through the MYA.
So, I'd have to go through MYA to do it for a soccer field?
Yes. Probably both, because, you know, um, Mike, the question I was gonna ask, if I may.
Absolutely.
Uh, are you gonna have some kind of a warning on either side of that driveway? If somebody, you know, sees this thing, oh, that's a great idea, and then starts to hang a right-hand turn in there. Uh, I'm sort of concerned about the way the road comes around and, and, yeah, the tra, the traffic piece of it.
Maybe put a sign at the beginning coming one way?
Or an arrow, arrow pointing down.
Yeah, to go into the...
Or a warning.
Yeah. That's a good idea, that's a good idea.
You know?
It's about approach.
Well, yeah, I mean, you could, you could advertise the project, okay? Scarecrows for sale or whatever, you know, drive carefully, be, you know, on your right, something like that. I mean, it's, it's simplistic, but...
We do have the orange robot signs in there.
Yes, we do, but it's usually placed further down way before... Yeah, way before you would see it, so, you know, I'm, I'm just, it's just a concern on my part that, you know, it's, it's gonna, because of the traffic volume through there on Saturdays, sometimes they come around the corner and they're not, they're more likely to be looking at Swan's Chocolate side to see what the flavor is than they are to what's going on the right-hand side of the road.
So, we'll have one pointing down, scarecrows for sale.
Well, first, we have to vote to give you permission to do it, right?
And I would comment to Council May on that this is a wonderful problem to be having considering before when we didn't have a town center, we weren't addressing these particular issues.
Yes, I understand that.
That's a good thing.
But...
And that's it, I mean, when I drove around Chester, you just got that feel of community and the whole town, so, you know, putting them down in that area, I think, is really, you know, would be great for all of us.
Oh, will this be another, uh, senior project like the pumpkin decorating was?
Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I would move that the town council approve the Merrimack Lions Club request to sell scarecrow kits for fundraising purposes on town-owned property during the months of September, of Octo, during the months of September and October on Saturdays between ten AM and one PM. Furthermore, acknowledge that this request was presented to the Parks and Recreation Committee and was approved and recommended to the town council for our consideration.
Second.
Mr. Woods, second.
In exception.
To mark your calendar, the twenty-seventh Merrimack Rocks Festival's already booked the park, so that'd be a Saturday. But if you call, um, you probably can get a booth and actually be there.
At the expo.
Ooh, what a good idea.
Get a booth at the expo.
There you go.
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you for thinking of that idea.
All right, well, I appreciate your time.
Hold on a second.
Are you still voting?
And if you could just notify the town manager where you're gonna be selling them?
Perfect.
Because you say town-owned land, there's a lot of town-owned land, so if you can just let us know, so that the police department will know where you're supposed to be.
Gotcha, okay.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor?
Tom, have a motion.
Whoops, sorry, Tom.
I guess I'm a little bit concerned about the, the haste with which we're going into this. I, I have no problem against the Lions, and, uh, I have no problem with the concept and the idea. I guess I'm a little concerned about suddenly deciding that we have to be on town land to, to sell for a fundraiser, you know, and I realize that we allow friends and family to use the library or the town hall parking lot for their yard sales and things of that nature. I just, I don't wanna open up a can of worms that says that any organization that wants to, to run a fundraiser for any good cause, to suddenly start coming up and say, well, I want my turn at Watson Park, and I want this. And Watson Park was never in my intent, my mind, understanding, intended to be a, a retail location, uh, for whatever good cause. And so, I'm a little bit concerned about doing that, thinking that there are other places, maybe Fraser Square would get as much traffic as, as Watson Park would, um, you know, maybe, uh, at, at the AO Prime or at the, the Swan's Chocolate or something like that. I don't know how much space you're talking about taking up. I don't wanna to have you guys fill up the park to any level that, that people don't feel comfortable going and enjoying, that, uh, are the parking being taken up and stuff like that. So, while I think they're, they're cute, and I think the idea is great as far as being able to have them around town and have a sense of community, I'm just a little concerned about suddenly deciding that Watson Park is the right way to, to sell them. The library, I, I guess, sounds pretty good to me, um, there's other opportunities in other places. I'm not sure that I've heard anything about how you're gonna utilize Watson Park or why Watson Park is important to you. And maybe you made all that presentation to Parks and Rec, but I, I haven't seen or heard any of that.
Um, it's more the visibility, like you said, driving by and seeing it. Um, and I think you have so much space there that we're not gonna take up the whole, the whole park.
Well, you talked, you talked at the beginning about spreading scarecrows all over and stuff like that, and I don't know what that means.
Like maybe three, three or four in the front.
Twenty I envisioned when you said that.
Yes, okay, I'm glad I could clarify that. And, yes, we would only probably be in a small little area selling them, we're not gonna take up the whole park.
And I understand that you wouldn't take up the whole park, but...
Yeah, um, I don't know, I'm trying to think of a dimension.
Unfortunately, we didn't, we didn't bring the PowerPoint, I mean, Chester's grew over four or five years. I think their attempt is just to do a community thing as well as selling them for a cause, 'cause that's what they do, but, and they have some volunteers, they're not, the Lions is not a large group, and I, we just felt that might be a good place. They've been to Dan Brown's doing the scavenger hunts all the years and raising different monies.
We probably only have one or two members selling, you know, at a little card table off to the side.
So, it's just a kickoff to try, but I understand.
Okay, so I, I guess I'd like to couch it on the idea that you're doing this as a community activity or involvement or awareness or something like that, and not necessarily as a fundraiser.
Correct.
Right.
I, I appreciate that you would be raising funds for a charity, um, and hopefully advertising what that would be, but, um, I wanna try and find some way to couch all of this to understand that we're not gonna get a stream of people coming and saying, well, I want my crack at that apple, to, to have that high visibility space and do sales or something like that, because I don't think that's what Watson Park was about.
Correct.
Right.
So...
To, to, to go along with that, it's not so much the space that you're physically gonna occupy, it's that if you get a fair number of automobiles in there, that parking area is rather limited. And that may have the impact of discouraging people from coming in or to use, because there may be, you know, if you're having a good day, uh, you know, it would discourage them from coming in, uh, so, I mean, it's just...
If anything, I'm hoping it will encourage them to come in, I mean, that is my thought on it, and is the way we presented it to, um, Parks and Rec, that this is something that the community, it would bring more people to the park, is my hope.
But we have, but we have very limited parking there, and, and we're trying to avoid expanding that so much that we take up the park with parking lot. So, there's a concern there. I'm wondering if there are other locations that are almost just as good, if not as good, like a Fraser Square, where the, the chamber come and used to have.
How do we get to Fraser Square, is there a permission?
Well, actually, there's no parking spaces there.
Right, I was gonna say, that's even a...
There's parking along the back, if you get away from the triangle off of DW Highway.
It's pretty minimal.
I can tell you from last weekend, selling at the library, we did not, they had a book sale going on at the same time, and most people were there for the book sale, I mean, they didn't even know about the scarecrow unless they had read about it in the paper. And, um, so, we only, uh, last week, we sold seven, and they were in, they were randomly coming in, so maybe, we were there for three hours, so seven in three hours, uh, we weren't causing a traffic jam or anything, I don't, so I don't think you're gonna see that.
Just out of curiosity, can I ask, you, you met with Parks and Rec Committee back in June, is that correct?
Um, yes, yes.
So, why is it now September before you come here?
Because July, uh, we don't have a P and R meeting, it was just the paperwork of summer, I, I think, and then they only wanted to do it for September, October.
Well, I know, but we're effectively halfway through September already.
Yeah, I, yeah, new, new, new ideas.
Thanks.
Yes, Finley?
I, I don't see it as a problem for Watson Park, I think Watson Park is a central focal point in the community, and, and I see, you know, we have very few nonprofits, and, and I, and I, and I can appreciate them doing something like this at Watson Park. We, we had the discussion a couple of years ago about vending hot dogs from the park and all.
That's right.
And that one was more difficult to put your arms around than this, for me, for me, 'cause this, you're right, it's a small group, uh, it, it is a fundraiser, but I, I think it, I've seen this in Hudson, I didn't know that it was a scarecrow thing, but some business had like ten or fifteen scarecrows set up, over the past couple of years, I've seen it, but, uh, so I, I, I think it'll be kinda nice, and if it's raging out of control, traffic jam, then maybe next year it wouldn't happen, but I think it's...
Right, or we, we reevaluate it if there is an issue, and give us a call.
And perhaps we do it one place, it's only, like you say, six or seven weekends. Um, I think they're hoping to do maybe fifty, and people are making these things.
Yeah.
Talk about volunteers. So, it, it's really hands-on volunteers that are doing it, I, I don't think that you imagined it would be that big.
No, I mean, we've made, um, our board approved for us to make fifty of them. We made fifty, and I really even haven't sold them to everybody in Merrimack, I've sold them randomly before we even started, and we've sold twenty-four, so we decided we better get, making a few more, so now we've made twenty-five more, so. Um, but we did say in our, um, paper until supplies last, because, you know, we don't wanna be making them at the last minute in October either, so, you know, we'll make a substantial amount, um, enough to give a good donation, and then we'll stop and wait till next year, and we're hoping next year maybe to do a theme, you know, like maybe superheroes for next year, and, um, there is a contest, um, that we're giving first, second, and third place prizes, um, if people send us their pictures, either by email to our, um, Lions web address or, um, through the, um, snail mail, uh, to our P.O. Box number, and, um, it runs from October first to October thirty-first, and we're just gonna give out like a first place, second place, third place prize, and put it in the paper. So, yeah, hopefully the community will really enjoy it.
Excellent. Okay, we have a motion on the floor that we have to vote on. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against? You're abstaining. Okay, so it's six, zero, one, Tom Koenig abstaining. Thank you very much, ladies.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Okay, thank you very much, and feel free to stop by and buy one.
I will, I think they're adorable. Okay, item number three, finally. Two thousand fourteen fifteen, New Hampshire Highway Safety Agency Operation Safe Commute Grant, submitted by Lieutenant Paul Trepani. Town council to consider the police department's request to apply for a highway safety grant, and I'll let you give the details, and thank you for being patient.
Thank you for having me. Uh, before the council tonight, asking to accept a grant, uh, actually, the application for a grant, uh, the Highway Safety Committee has been, for the last couple of years, run this project annually, uh, Operation Safe Commute. They do twelve targeted days over the course of the year, two patrols, a morning patrol and an afternoon patrol. Um, and the, you know, it's, it's a traffic enforcement, but the, the focus is on distracted driving, which that's gonna be a big thing coming up with the, uh, new law coming in in July with the hands-free device only use. Um, anyhow, the award in the amount of four thousand four hundred ninety-two eighty would cover these patrols overtime. Again, twelve patrols times two a day, uh, and they are targeted for specific days, it's a statewide project.
Any questions from anyone? Ben Dase? Yes.
Tom's first.
Tom?
So, um, thank you for, for presenting this again, and as always, I, I always have some concerns about grants and the cost of administering grants and things of that nature, so, on, on the page, whatever it is of the, of the contractual agreement, you've got it down here, three thousand four hundred fifty-six dollars for salary, and then another thousand thirty-six dollars for thirty percent of that amount for payroll-related deductions. And then there's an asterisk saying that there's more information somewhere else, but I wasn't able to find out where somewhere else was. Just wondering if you could help me to understand?
Uh, that's under the proposed solution, that's where it's, uh, showing the three-hour shift, six to nine in the morning, four to seven in the afternoon, and the actual specific dates.
So, what's the thousand dollars?
Uh, that is for the, uh, the, the, the cost of benefits and payroll taxes, health insurance.
The forty-eight dollars an hour is your overtime pay, and then there's the additional, is that right, of the thousand dollars to pay for the town expenses for that overtime pay?
Medicare, it's the retirement, it's the worker, not the workers' comp, but, uh, you know, other, other related expenses that go along with that.
And what's the, the cost and/or whatnot to manage to maintain, to put out the quarterly and the monthly reports and all that kinda stuff, is that factored in, or is that covered by the department?
It's not, that's an administrative burden that I, I carry.
You carry?
Yeah.
And so, what the hell of finance? That's, that's some nice broad shoulders.
Do you do all the grants?
I get, I get all the grants now, yes.
So, that's part of you.
With, with the exception of a couple, there's some specialized grants, like Captain Dash is doing that, uh, right now, he's working on the, um, active shooter grant training process there, the big project, so, there are a few, um, but I, I get all the highway safety ones, and then the occasional other special projects.
See, you do well with grant management, they just...
It's juggle, but, uh, I'm one of those anal people that keeps pretty detailed records.
There you go, that's why you got it.
So, so what do you think the, the cost in, in your time is to manage and maintain these as far as paperwork and pulling records together and filing reports and stuff like that? Is it relatively trivial, or is it hours a day or a week, or...
When I, when I actually pull the stats for the quarterly, it, it may take me a half hour to pull the stats and document them.
Okay, because it, it talks in here, there's, there's a whole lot of garbage, of verbiage in here. Excuse me.
I think you were right the first time.
There's, there's a lot of verbiage in here about all the different things that have to do with... to do with federal grants and stuff like that, Buy America Acts and Drug Free Workplace Acts and restriction of state lobbying and it just goes on and on and on. And I don't know how much of that impacts you on something like this. I'm guessing not very much.
No.
Then there's a, a second addendum, which I couldn't understand because it was written in language that I don't consider English. But, um, I, I guess I'm, it, it talks about the reports and I think I've asked this in the past. It talks about filing quarterly reports and then after the project's over, all the monthly reports have to be submitted within twenty days or thirty days or something like that.
And, a- again, as these, as these go along, I keep track of the details as they go through and, you know, I keep that all in a binder and they get submitted to finances. I get them and then the whole final package is submitted and they take care of it on their end on the numbers and submit it.
Okay. And, and there's, there was a chart in here which talks about the activities, I'm guessing, the overtime selective traffic enforcement program report. Do, do you fill out this kind of a report that talks about what, how many warnings and summonses and arrests?
I only sign off on it. The actual officer that is out during that detail, that's in the three hours he's out doing it, at the end of the detail, he fills that in statistically, fills in all the numbers and I just sign off that, you know, when I verify he did those hours.
Did you, do you put together a, a report of this sort at the end saying, we did overtime, we did fourteen arrests and thirty-three?
No, those are just attached to the, all those are copied and go with the grant.
So do we have any idea of, of what we've done in the past as far as responses from-
I have copies. I do have copies of all those reports available if you'd like to see them.
No, I don't. I want you to summarize it for me.
I think, I think it was in here, Tom. I thought I had seen it.
Is it?
I, I just-
Well, you're looking, you're looking at the summary of the statistics there.
From the previous, from the previous years.
Yeah, right.
I'm not sure if that's a result of ours, of those on national.
Those are probably the whole, that one, but I thought I had seen a-
That's right. This thing up here?
No.
No, I, I didn't think it was happening, but it may have been.
Cause I think those-
I thought the only chart I saw in there was an example of a schedule that you might fill in or something like that. So I was just wondering if you had some kind of report or-
It's a state.
Something that you put together at the end of the, end of the program that says, this is what we accomplished or this is what we did.
That must be a number one.
As a, as a general.
No.
Right? Cause that's what I assumed that chart was, but you're telling me that's a daily report.
There, there is a, the annual report on these that is done at the end of the year, but it's an overall picture. It's not just what was done on the enforcement. It's our, you know, our total activity, our total accidents, our total enforcement. And these are just, these are separate numbers that contribute to that total. These, these extra patrols do give us extra bodies on the road to, you know, further incentive of safe driving.
Yeah, I guess I was just trying to understand if there's something that, that you can qualitatively understand the, the advantage of having this program versus the overall annual effect of the patrols out there. So, I mean, you, having, having these directed patrols of people in overtime gives us two percent, five percent, ten percent more coverage or more responsiveness or something like that. I, just-
It does give us more man-hours, bodies on the street.
Yeah, I know. And, and you could probably tell me the percentage and it's probably really small of the overall man-hours on the street, you know, against the annual amount, right? Cause you're only talking about forty-eight hours or something like that here versus, I don't know how many thousands of hours you guys are out on the street anyway.
Correct.
So it's, it's not a huge thing, but it's-
Every little bit helps.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any, any other questions? Motion?
Madam Chairman, I would move that the town council approve the police department's request to apply for a highway safety grant made available to the New Hampshire Highway Safety Agency to fund overtime patrols on specific target dates for, for two, three-hour patrols for twelve days in the amount of four thousand four hundred ninety-two dollars and eighty cents. And furthermore, that the town manager and/or her proxy be instructed to sign any and all documents necessary to perfect the grant application.
Thank you. Second?
It looks like the town council has to sign it as well.
And us too.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Bill Boyd, second by Tom Mahon. Okay, any other questions? I see none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Seven, zero, zero.
As far as, as far as the signatures, Madam Chairman, you can sign it or you can authorize the town manager to sign it.
So I-
Either or.
So my name will be on a federal grant. They're already on like fifteen others, so.
But not from the town of Merrimack.
Not from the town of Merrimack. Thank you very much. I appreciate.
Thank you very much for your time.
It's like, how do your fingerprints take it? Your life of crime?
I've had that too.
Yeah, your life of puberty.
Works for the VA.
And no longer.
Good night.
Good night.
Anonymously pursuant to your life of crime.
Aye. Okay, Mr. Macaulay, you're on the last one. Acceptance of Fraser Square Veterans' Memorial donations table from the August twenty-first town council meeting to consider the acceptance and expenditure of the following donations, and I'll let you.
With the passing of our previous chair, David Yakubov, uh, this project, Fraser Square Veterans Memorial, meant a lot to him and his family was so gracious that all donations, instead of sending flowers, would come to the town ma, uh, town of Merrimack in honor of, of David for, for this veterans memorial. Uh, to date, we raised seven hundred and sixty dollars for the veterans memorial. We had one donation that wanted to go towards the dog park in Dave's name. So, we, um, I come before you tonight to ask for the acceptance and expenditure of the seven hundred and sixty dollars for the veteran square. And if I may, just a little bit, um, we've had a little working subgroup that's been hard at work. Um, and what I'm passing out right now is a brochure that we designed and a PowerPoint presentation. So when people go out to businesses, we're all speaking with the same elevator speech and things of that sort. Um, we wanted to give this out to the council so that you're aware of it. Um, basically, uh, we, we took the, uh, the challenge coin that's being sold and we made that our, our main focus on all our documents. Um, the, the handout that will be made, uh, here on the back, we incorporated the order form for the, um, for the pavers. So now that somebody has the information, they can just tear off the back sheet and give that order form instead of having to find an order form, fill it out, and then turn it into somebody or, or at the, the town hall finance department for those, uh, pavers. Um, we incorporated our, our vision a little bit, um, and, and the vision is to honor those who sacrificed so much. And that's really what this Fraser Square Park is all about is, is to honor our, our servicemen who served, um, throughout the branches of, of the military and those who have sacrificed and their families who have sacrificed so much to allow those members to go abroad and overseas and, and fight these, these wars and conflicts. Um, and then we kind of, in the, in the, um, overall presentation, we kinda talk about Mr. Duncan Fraser and, and why the square is named after him and, and World War One being killed with the Saturday Evening Post. And a lot of people, I heard it even tonight, where's Fraser Square? Well, Fraser Square is located right in front of Merrimack Flower Shop and next to Rivet's Funeral Home, across the street from Red Aid and that new-
Triangle.
Um, it's the triangle right next to the bank, Santara?
Santana.
Santana Bank, um, right, right, if you're looking at, if you're looking at the bank to the left of the bank, that, that's Fraser Square and that's, uh, there's a plaque in there for Duncan, Mr. Duncan Fraser, uh, U.S. Marine at the time. And, um, there's also a WW2 monument in there also for, I believe Pearl Harbor.
Under.
And that's off to the right and there's a little monument over to the right as you're looking at the square and then the flagpole.
And there's someone else too there. It's, it's under the tree.
Yes. Um, and I, uh, it's interesting because I got to research it a little more and, and there was another person, his name was Jimmy. And he died in the same battle as Duncan Fraser and I guess they were both from Merrimack.
Okay.
And it's on the historical site and they talk about that too. So-
Guy's last name?
They were gonna include it somehow.
I, I, I had it, but, uh, it got cut from one of the drafts. But, uh, yeah, no, I guess they were classmates and they, they actually were in the same battle and died in the same battle.
Yeah.
Um, so it was pretty wild on a World War One. Um, once again, I do come before you because of, of the donations that we have received for, um, Dave Yakubov and, and I wanna thank his family for allowing, you know, instead of little flowers, allowing for this. And, uh, the, the money will be put to good use. Um, you know, we're, we're, we're looking at, um, buying some banners so that we could advertise it.
Excellent.
Where, where Fraser Square is and, and what's going on there. Uh, one banner so that when we do go to, uh, these, these places, we can have a banner to, to, to the industries and, and as like the Business Expo or the Merrimack Rocks that people all know what's going on and they can actually see it. And then one other banner that would be floating around town with permission of the town council and things of that sort. So.
Excellent.
And most of the money will go back into the square.
Any questions, comments?
Madam Chairman, I move that the town council accept and expend the following donations made in the memory of David G. Yakubov Senior in pursuit to shot at Article eight hyphen fifteen in RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five hyphen B to wit, seven hundred and sixty dollars for Fraser Square Veteran Memorial Improvement slash Maintenance and fifty dollars for the Wasserman Park Dog Park Improvements Maintenance.
Second. Motion by Bill Boyd, second by Lon Woods. Okay. Do you have a question?
No, I, just to have a comment. I think we ought to also thank those who made the contributions in addition to the generosity of the family in this matter for making a contribution in that fashion. Uh, you know, as you know, Dave was a very, he and I were cigar-smoking buddies and [laughing] it's, uh, it's been tough sitting out in my yard by myself having a cigar every once in a while or before the two of us would have them together. Uh, so it's, it's, uh, so I just wanna make sure that those who made those contributions get some recognition for what they did.
And I sent out a personal thank you to each and every one of them.
Excellent. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Seven, zero, zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're getting near the finish line. It won't be that early to budget season. Okay, approve the minutes from the following town council meeting. First, May sixteenth, two thousand fourteen, which was the before-mentioned retreat.
Move approval.
Motion by Bill Boyd, second.
Second.
Second by Finley Rothaus. If any revisions or changes suggested? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seven, zero, zero.
Point of order?
Yep.
Lon Woods was not present at the retreat, therefore should be reflected.
So there should be. Seven, zero, one. Thank you.
Six, zero, one.
Ah, details.
Fuzzy math.
Six, zero, one, but Lon Woods abstaining. Thank you for catching that. [laughing] I'm getting punchy. Okay. I know, what's gonna happen in January. Okay. Okay, July seventeenth, two thousand fourteen.
Moved or accepted.
Seconded.
Tom Mahon made the motion. Bill Boyd, second.
With the following modification?
With the following modifications.
On line twenty-four of page four, there should be language in there that reads, "Council Lon Wood joined the town council and therefore should be reflected as being a part of the meeting that's reflected on line three of page one of the minutes." In other words, there's an attendance.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other revisions? Yes, Tom?
I, I, I just was struck by line twelve, trying to figure out what Aviva Voce-
What page?
Of page four.
Voce.
Voce.
Aviva Voce roll call is.
My voice.
My voice.
Can't we just say that? I mean, I, what, it's not a common terminology in my mind and I'd like to see our council minutes be more in common terminology. Nobody, huh? Page four, line twelve.
Line twelve.
Aviva Voce roll call is just a-
Doesn't it sound, doesn't it sound oppressive though?
It sounds good.
I do understand your point.
Well, I didn't know what it was and so maybe that's my ignorance shining, but-
No, voice.
I figured it must be a voice call because of the way it's, but-
I agree with you.
It's lively voice.
Means lively voice.
To change it to voice call.
Literal translation.
It's a voice roll call. Any other?
Um, on page seven, line forty-one, it says the, and along with other things, "Have authorized the closure of the boat ramp to minimize any exacerbation of that by boats entering, chopping up the mill foil and creating new blooms."
Exacerbation.
Exacerb-
E-X-A-C.
Exa-
Exacerbation.
Exacerbation.
Yep.
Well, that's certainly the word I was questioning and whether, whether it be exacerbations or exacerbations-
That's what was meant.
Or just, uh, expansion. Um, I, I guess I was-
Or reactivation.
Or reactivation or, or, I mean, there's probably a lot of ways to say that, that people might have a better understanding.
Better than exacerbation.
Seven forty-two, forty-one, forty-two is where that line is. Forty-one is where that word is.
Minimize any exacerbation is what it was supposed to be.
[inaudible]
It should say, "As a result of the boats entering," of that by boats, minimize any exacerbation as a result of boats entering. That's what I think it was intended.
And chopping up the mill foil or something to that effect. I mean, it, it just doesn't run very clearly to me as to what we're talking about.
Exacerbation of, as a result of, as a result of boats entering. Right?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I had.
Okay. Any others? No? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, you're abstaining as well?
No.
No, you're here.
I am too.
We are going to do a six, zero, one and the abstention is Mr. Finley.
Yes.
Counselor Finley. Okay.
Mr. Finley.
Must've, and I changed it to Counselor Finley.
Madam Chair, move the-
August twenty-first.
Move, please move the August twenty-first, two thousand fourteen minutes.
Second.
Bill Boyd and Tom Mahon, seconded. Any changes, revisions, questions? None. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I do seven, zero, zero?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Bingo.
Bingo. Okay. Comments from the press? None. Comments from the public? Um, comments from the council? Of course there will be some. Yes, Mr. Counselor Mahon.
I'm not stealing Tom's thunder, but we had a very nice editorial in the National Telegraph last week regarding our action on the, on the unrestricted fund balance issue and the allocation of additional money for some projects. It's, as many people said to me, that's highly unusual. They were shocked.
Shocked, I tell ya.
Shocked, yes.
You were shocked to see it.
Yeah. To quote Captain Renault in Casablanca.
Shocked, I tell you, shocked. It was nice to see it.
But anyway, you know, thank, thank the Telegraph for noticing and for the praise. We appreciate it very much. Uh, but yeah, it is rather unusual for something like that to happen. And, uh, we'll wait to see if we can continue the streak [laugh] or whether-
And if people didn't see it, it was in the September fourth edition of the Telegraph called Walk in the Park for Merrimack. And it, it did talk quite a bit about, uh, how well we're doing our job, being fiscally prudent and financially responsible. And one of the things that I wanted to try and add to that is that it mentions that we have a fund balance and we have a range that we're trying to do. Uh, and our range, I think, is four to eight percent. We're sitting around four percent. That's probably the number I suspect we're gonna stick to is around that number. Um, but it, it mentions specifically that many communities try to go up to ten percent and beyond and points out that that's an over, over taxation of the people, which is what we've always, while I've been on the council, you know, maintained and tried to, uh, avoid getting into that kind of a situation. On the other hand, being down at two percent puts us in a- being down at two percent puts us in a fiscal bind or a potential fiscal bind in being able to pay our bills on a monthly basis. And that's why it's important and imperative for us to be able to manage that fund balance. And it's nice to see that the editorial staff recognized that and went to the point of actually writing about it in their, in their paper.
Well, they haven't seen some of the cities and towns in the Midwest and West where their unrestricted fund balance ranges from fifteen to thirty percent.
How can they handle taxes all over?
Well, because they have other revenue sources than we do.
Like oil. Well, yeah, now.
Like sales taxes and local option and those sorts of things. I mean, there's a lot of other factors that, that go into play, but a lot of them are doing it because it improves their bond rating. They're big enough that they, that they have a separate bond rating and it, and it helps improve their bond rating. But, you know, it, what I would tell people how much our fund balance is where they would choke, you know? How do you, how do you survive on that? I don't know, we've been around for two hundred and thirty-five years. I guess we can do it.
We have a good finance director and town manager.
Yeah, we're doing okay. So, you know. But anyway, enough.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Boyd?
Thank you. Just very quickly, next Saturday, the twentieth of September, is Erica's Run over at the high school. It's been an annual event now for the last couple of years to celebrate and honor the memory of Erica Palmriel who lost a very valiant battle to cancer. So, www.erakasrun.com and I hope to see people at the event next Saturday. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? No. Okay.
Move to adjourn.
Here we go. Counselor Mahan, and seconded by Counselor Koenig. All those in favor?
Aye.
Another seven, zero, zero vote. Thank you and good night, everyone.